Thank you all for being here tonight. We love seeing a full room, but we know here in about 45 minutes we'll be empty. So that's okay. We take it when we can get it. At this time, the Grapevine Colleyville Independent School District Board of Trustees and Central Administration will pause for a moment of silence to reflect on the continued successes of our district, the safety and well-being of our students, our dedicated teachers and staff, and our supportive community. Thank you all very much. Now, at this time, we will have the U.S. and the Texas pledges, and tonight we are honored to have the students from Colleyville Middle School Honors Band. They will proudly represent us in reciting both the U.S. pledge followed by the Texas pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all very much. I know we put you on the spot for doing that tonight, so thank you all. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Ryan for the introduction of our recognitions for this evening. Dr. Ryan?
Thank you very much. The first item is our LEAD 2.0 monthly highlight. It's at this point in our meeting, each time that we bring to our board and to our community an update on our strategic plan. We've just transitioned from LEAD 2021 to a new version of that, which is LEAD 2.0. And one of the most important parts of LEAD 2.0 is putting a fantastic teacher with our students every single day and every single classroom. And to do that, we've got several teachers that join us each year, and we've got to get them started off on the right track. And so we call that induction in GCISD, and so I'll turn it over to Dr. Schnautz to introduce about induction of teachers.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Ryan. So as we've transitioned into LEAD 2.0, we've begun to analyze and refine certain areas of our practice to build upon the foundations of success with LEAD 2021. One of those areas is our induction process. And so tonight, you're going to hear from Dr. Newell and a few of our leaders to talk about how we induct and bring our new staff into GCISD, how we support them through the years, and just develop them so that they can be the best they can be each and every day for our students. So, Dr. Newell?
Thank you. I'm excited to get to visit with you tonight, and we've got kind of a new spin on an old topic. And we talk to you about once a year related to our induction program. And as Gemma Paget has told us, the way that we do induction here is one of the biggest selling points when they meet teachers at job fairs, because inevitably, one of the first questions they ask is, "How do you provide support for new teachers?" And so we've had a pretty winning combination of the way that we support teachers for quite a while. And Brandy and Jenna, Brandy Carey and Jenna Brozet, they run that program as sort of an other duty as assigned, as a part of their humanities coaching responsibilities. They're going to talk about that here in just a minute. But this year, we've added some things to our induction program, because what we've learned through our induction program with teachers is that this process is one of the most important levers in changing the culture of a district and growing the culture of a district. And so when you induct folks into your system and you show them the vision and the goals and where you're going, and you equip them with that perspective, you are able to make headway in a way that you wouldn't have been able to do necessarily with the staff in another way. And so this year, we added dimensions of induction for para-professionals and induction for leaders. And we have not had those components formally and systematically in the way that we are going to share with you tonight. And I'm going to get out of the way for most of the presentation tonight and let the folks who have done that work share it with you. But before I do, I want to draw your attention to this slide. Now we're switching to LEAD 2.0 goals. And so this one relates to student engagement and student voice. And students tell us that they want their teachers to design effective instruction and understand meaningful uses of technology and really listen to their voices. And so we are attaching Strategy Number One Personnel and Strategy Number Two Personalized Learning underneath this goal. And so I just wanted to kind of draw your attention to this structure, both to show you the way in which we're featuring LEAD 2.0 goals this year and to show you what a heavy hitter this particular one is, because it really is important in all different aspects of our district's organization. So basically, you're going to get a taste of all three of these tonight. We've got folks who are involved with all of them. And before I turn it over to Brandy and Jenna, I'm just going to point out that we have been a little bit more systematic. One of the things that we started doing with induction when we began this system that we use is we weren't necessarily collecting a lot of feedback from the participants about how we did it, how we could do it more effectively, and what the results were. And so we're doing that much more systematically this year, and I just captured one tiny slide here from the folks who went through any of the types of our orientation this past summer, over the course of the last six weeks. Now, we had about 160 people go through, and about 40-some-odd of them have elected to answer this part of the survey. But it is one example of the type of feedback that we're starting to collect more systematically, and we'll be able to compare some of those results as we go throughout the work. So I'm going to let Brandy Carey talk to you a little bit about some of the work that we do as we induct teachers in GCISD. And a lot of this she's shared with you before, but we're continuing to grow the practice, and so I wanted to highlight some of those things.
Thank you, Dr. Newell.
Okay, so as she mentioned, we discussed a couple of times with you all, we've had the pleasure to kind of talk through our induction model for teachers. But overall, our entire goal is just for anyone who comes into and is hired into GCISD that they walk away feeling like they are a welcomed and a valued member of our family. That is a number-one thing for us, and I think that we continue to get feedback, that that is a strength, that they do feel like they are brought into a true family experience. So to date this year, we have about 170 professional new hires. And in order to prepare them for the first couple of days, first few days of school and to get going, kick the year off right, we had several different learning opportunities for them, and she's got them detailed there on the slides. So we started with kicking off our First Year Teacher Academy, which is specifically for those teachers who are brand-new to the profession. We have 41 so far this year. And then that goes into the larger group of the 160 or so at that time, overall induction into GCISD, and then specifically into strategic curriculum groups. So if, depending on their teaching assignment, then they were getting a lot of tailored things there. And then, once all of our teachers came back the following week, we really wanted to spend some time getting them connected with the veteran teachers, the people that have been here for years. And so we see that happening through the Great Alike or Role Alike Day that happened on August the 14th. So that's where we have all of our new people and all of our veteran people coming together and learning on specific curriculum topics. But that is just to kind of kick off the year. In general, we really believe that induction is a process. It's not just an event. And so that is why we have the system designed as we do, the model that we have, so that we have tiered support regardless of, you know, what you're teaching or who you are, how long you've been doing it, that you are partnered with someone here, because we believe that we're all in a learning journey and that we want to grow and get better for our students, because ultimately, they're the ones that are going to benefit from that. We have, as she mentioned, layered in additional metrics this year. We're aligning with national research and best practices in the support that we provide and collecting some quantifiable data on that so that we can effectively measure what that support has looked like. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So one of the new things, and I can take absolutely no credit for this, we have a new member of our team, and that's Juliana Nichols Haslett. You may have met her during some of our LEAD 2.0 work. And she, along with the Special Services Team, recognized a need to provide some additional support for paraprofessionals. And so they organized this and provided the opportunity this summer for about 110 participants. And I'm going to invite her, along with Cindy Byrd, one of our Bear Creek paraprofessionals, to come up and talk to you a little bit about that experience.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to officially meet you as an employee of GCISD. And so thanks for having us this evening. And so as Dr. Newell expressed, that we saw a need. I have the background of being a special education teacher, a general education teacher, a campus administrator, and recognizing that paraprofessionals are the backbone of the work that I was able to do, because they were able to take the heart and the spirit of what we wanted for kids out into places that we maybe couldn't get to as teachers and/or administrators. And so it was one of those kind of a dream of our department to provide intentional support for the growth and development of our paraprofessionals, knowing that many times, they have the most direct and day-to-day contact with many of our students who have the greatest needs. Therefore, it just seemed fitting that those who we call to have the greatest impact on the day-to-day of a child, that we would also impact their ability to have some opportunities to learn for themselves. And so some of the things that we looked at for some topics, we're obviously looking at the IEP, the Individual Education Plan, and the empowerment and importance of that. But we did a lot of time spent talking about the social-emotional well-development of not just students, but of the adults, and kind of what do we do when there are tricky things that happen. And when we work with special populations, tricky things can happen from time to time, as does with any student. And so just making sure that people feel equipped, but also connected with each other, and then connected to us at the department level, but then also at the district level. Because when we're connected with each other, it's much easier to connect to the work, especially when there needs to be an all kind of hands approach. And so one of the things we also looked about, we pulled in a couple of different departments that come in. There was Professional Communication with Kristin and Addison, Restorative Practices, so Amy Montemayor, our Intervention Leader, and some of our counselors came in and provided that opportunity for some classroom circles. And we also did some stuff about trauma-informed and responsive practices. Once again, knowing that some of our students have really been impacted by experiences that they've had no control over, and that does something to your brain, and that's important to equip people with the knowledge who are impacted by some of the things as a result of those. And so a couple of the comments that came out of this was, I thought, was really powerful of one of the paraprofessionals who's been in the district, because every paraprofessional was invited to come. So it wasn't just the brand-new to the profession, but those who also recognize that sometimes we need to try something brand-new to support everyone. And all of them that stood out the most was that in a district that focuses on student voice, it's really nice to finally have, feel like my voice matters too. And even though that was never an intentional design, just recognizing we maybe never, in this way, acknowledged the need for the growth and understanding of that practice. And so we thought it'd be really nice. We got to invite a participant, and so we invited Cindy Byrd, and she is a paraprofessional from Bear Creek Elementary School. So I'd like to invite her up to speak with you now.
So it's been a while since I've spoke to a large group, so I remember that sound. So thank you again for everybody giving me the opportunity to talk tonight. So just a little bit about me. I'll give you a little bit of background. Let's see, where do we begin? I can tell you that I've been a paraprofessional at Bear Creek Elementary for four years now. Pretty much, I can tell you that 24 years ago, my husband and I bought a home in GCISD so that our own children could attend Bear Creek Elementary, because we had heard how great it was. Both of our boys completed kindergarten through 12th grade here at GCISD. Having been teaching for over 30 years, I attended many, many trainings. That being said, our training for the paraprofessionals this year, Paradise this summer, was one of the best, if not the best, that I have ever attended. I feel that the training was exceptionally beneficial for all employees and extremely useful for paraprofessionals to take back to their campus and continue to use daily. The information that was shared with us at the environmental trauma training truly, truly opened my eyes. Some children, adults, it tells, it really taught us, and it really was emotional for us, because you don't realize the environmental traumas that people deal with every day. It really gets me emotional, because not just things like, you know, everyday traumas in the world, but financial traumas, divorce traumas, things that we don't think about. So that was very emotional for me, the things that they touched on. It was refreshing to attend a training also where there was new information. As pairs, we felt appreciated, inspired, and we left really ready to start the new school year. I can honestly also say that I look forward to our next session in the fall. And thank you again for giving me the opportunity, and whoever hired her, they need her.
Juliana, you did not tell her to say that, did you?
Thank you so much.
One of the other induction programs that we put in place this year was a more formalized leaders induction. And we started that with a couple of days in July, and we're going to follow that up with PLC dates that'll be monthly or so throughout the rest of the school year that have time-sensitive topics. Basically, I worked with Dr. Shiber and Conrad Streeter and other departmental leaders, Kristin Snively and Kyle Berger and several others, who came in and visited. Alan Smith came in and visited and so forth. And so the agenda ran the gamut of topics, basically just to provide at least a first line of information for all the 8,000 things they need to know the very first day that they start on the job. And so the target audience was both campus administration as well as CNI leadership. So our instructional coaches and learning liaisons and special services folks were all side-by-side in that. And so tonight, we've got a couple of folks who went through that training. One is one of our new instructional coaches on the Instructional Technology Team, and that's Grace Equy. And she's coming to us from Richardson ISD, and you wouldn't know that, she hadn't been here for years. She is just completely bonded with that team and is doing great things already in the district. And Nicole Whiteside, who I thought her perspective would be particularly interesting as well, because she wasn't new to the district, but she was new to her role. And so she attended, and they both had some interesting reflections. So I'm going to invite you guys to come on up and share a little bit about what you experienced.
All right. For me, I think the most unique thing was just getting to meet people without them being in their role yet. So we met them just as people. We all came together as new leaders, and we're all nervous and excited. We're all going through the same thing. And then weeks later, we see them in their role, and it's like, "Oh, you're a principal? Oh, cool." And it was just really cool to meet the person first, because I've never had an experience like that. So I really enjoyed that experience. And also, it's going to feel like we are also a class that will graduate at the end of the year too, just like the students. So I really appreciate the experience and the opportunity to grow with fellow leaders and walk with them in this journey to make our impact with the students and educators that we come across each day. Thank you.
To kind of reiterate what Grace just shared, for me, the thing that I think, the word that comes to mind when I think about my experience with leader induction is really that connection. I don't think our work is ever done when it comes to making connections with those that we work with, and especially when we have new members joining our team. And so the opportunity to, as she was saying, to meet other new leaders and build our community of learners is a really unique opportunity. I really appreciated the opportunity to sit down with some of our district leadership, Alan Smith, Kristin Snively, just to name a few. There were several people that came and met with us and really talked about how they can provide support to us, in particular, and our campus. I also had the very unique opportunity to attend with my assistant principal. So in between the discussions and the learning that was happening, we actually got to talk about how that would apply to us and apply to our campus and how we could use that to our benefit to further our campus. And then it really just drove home that idea of working together. That's such a common thread here in GCISD, and it really drove that mission home, that working together makes us better for one another and for our students. So, thank you.
So there were a couple of additional pieces of feedback that we received. And again, we're going to collect that as we go throughout the year. So that is kind of in summary, what we are doing with induction this year, at least to this point. And everybody always says, "How was your summer?" to people in CNI or Central Office roles, and we're like, "What summer?" We actually get to kind of take a deep breath sometimes when the kids come back, because a lot of this induction consumes our night and days during the summer months. But it was a great ride this August, and I'm excited about the way in which it has launched us into the school year. So do you have any questions for me before we sit down, or some of our friends?
Yeah, Dr. Newell, would you do me a favor? Would you go ahead and, yeah, go back to the slide where we were talking about the paraprofessionals?
Okay.
That, oh, yeah, that one. It says the sampling, the topics. Did we share those with, have we shared those with everyone else besides the paraprofessionals? Because, I mean, there's some awesome topics, the restorative practices, collaborative teaching structures, the responsive practices with trauma. So those are all, the power proximity, those are all very critical, and not just our paraprofessionals. But you were saying you also had training for new teachers that were into the district. So have we, did they have the same types of classes?
Yes, sir. Let me go back to, hold on, let me find the right slide. So on the teacher induction, those Role Alike Villages on the 8th, that is the place where we modeled a lot of that strategy and built in some of the cultural pieces that are kind of norms across the district that related to some of the things she said there. Obviously, when you have to do your curriculum orientation and everything else, sometimes time gets the better of you, and you don't get to do everything. But a lot of those things are offered for teachers, in some cases throughout the year, in other settings through PLCs and whatnot, and through the GCLI event that we're going to have on the 23rd. And so it just, one of the things that was unique about the Paraprofessional Institute is a lot of times, our paraprofessionals don't get to come to a lot of the other professional learning experiences that our teachers have throughout the year.
Yeah, and I noticed there was the topic, of course, of accommodations, and that's critical.
Absolutely.
Especially we're talking about students with dyslexia.
Yeah.
So it's important that not only are beginning teachers or paraprofessionals. My other question is, have we thought, let me ask it this way. Do we have a stable cadre of substitute teachers?
We do. We do.
Do we do anything for those folks?
You know what? This is one of the only districts I've been in. Gemma's over there smiling, because we do this very well, actually, from what I've gathered, and she can probably speak to those details. Maybe that can be a LEAD 2.0 spotlight one of these times.
Here at the Passbar, does our substitutes, and recently, she attended the Restorative Practices Training so that she can train our substitutes. She's very engaging, and she wants to teach our substitutes all of the practices and the things that we do in GCISD well. So we have a substitute orientation about every two weeks, the beginning of the school year, and so we have about 400 substitutes.
Okay. And then one of the presenters made reference to metrics and collecting data that you'll be looking at. I think you did. Could you expand a little more on that in terms of when you will have that data and then how you intend to then utilize that data and those analytics and be able to apply those to it?
For sure. So one of the pieces of learning that Jenna and I actually engaged in last year was going to a national conference, looking at what are the research-based best practices for inducting new teachers and specifically first-year teachers. And through that, we were able to solidify three main categories, so that we're able to say that when we train our coaches and our mentors really well, which we do, and then when we spend a minimum amount of time, which they have actually quantified to 180 minutes per month, which we do, and then when 80% of those 180 minutes are spent on high-leverage areas of planning and preparing, observing and reflecting, and then looking at analyzing data. When we do that, then national data trends show us that we can have improvement of up to five months in student performance.
Excellent.
Wow.
So we're collecting data around that and what are our areas of focus when we're supporting our new teachers, and then looking at that at regular intervals throughout the year.
And this is across all grades?
Yes.
Excellent. Very good. By the way, great presentation for you.
Yeah, so, Dr. Newell, I think Cindy mentioned something about getting back together again in the fall. Was she referring to the September 23rd, and will there still be induction-type things? Or are you all doing specific things for her? I was just curious.
I know they're invited to GCLI, but I'm going to let Juliana answer that question.
And so the idea is that we continue this process throughout the year?
I was just going to say, it didn't sound like this was going to be a one-time.
Yeah, learning doesn't stop for kids. It doesn't stop for teachers, and it definitely shouldn't stop for paraprofessionals as well. And there was just such a heightened level of engagement and excitement and gratitude for just being fed as a learner that the fall, that they're definitely invited to the GCLI, something that's going to be a lot more focused. It'll have to be in the spring semester. But, so I work on this instructional support team with special services, and I get to also then work in Dr. Newell's leadership team and then Dr. Wishman's team. And so the great thing is, I have a team that we get to support out on campuses. And within that, we also, not only are we supporting teachers through coaching, we're also making sure we have those relationships in that coaching piece with paraprofessionals as well. So they'll get some ongoing support just naturally by us being on campus, serving teachers. We have those relationships. We know names. We know faces now to where we can kind of really place who supports who where. But the idea is that we get to come back together and do like, dig deeper into the idea of the trauma-responsive piece specifically. And then that would kind of probably be more in the spring. We'll have some ongoing things that are kind of more organic in the fall.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. Thank you. We really appreciate the work that we're doing to make sure that every teacher, every professional gets started off on the right track in GCISD. Our first recognition this evening is for the Board Honor Code. And trustee, I mean, Board President Lisa Pardo is signing the Honor Code. I'll talk a little bit about it. At the start of each new school year, our Board of Trustees, along with our students across the entire district, sign an Honor Code. And by signing this Honor Code, our board commits to nurturing a climate of honor, integrity, respect, tolerance, and trust for all members of the community. And the signed Honor Code is going to be posted right outside this door, and happens every single year. And so we appreciate the fact that you are setting the standard for our district for integrity and that you live up to that standard, and you do so by signing the Honor Code right at the beginning of the school year. So we'll pause for just a few moments to get our trustees to sign the Honor Code, and then we'll be able to post it right outside the boardroom. This is the exciting part. We appreciate the board setting the standard for integrity in GCISD. Let's give them a round of applause for signing the Honor Code this evening. Our next recognition is for the Walk of Honor and the, actually, the next level of honorees. And I see Mary Humphrey is here from the Walk of Honor Board. I'll talk a little bit about the Walk of Honor. Of course, right across the street, we have the new and improved Mustang Panther Stadium. And as a part of looking to the future with the brand-new stadium, we also want to honor the past in GCISD by signifying some of the folks that have gone before us and made a huge impact on this school district. And so as you enter the stadium and walk to your seats, you'll see eight different stations of the Walk of Honor. And last year, we had our first induction of Walk of Honor members. This year would be the second year, and so we want to celebrate with our Walk of Honor Committee. And the president of the Walk of Honor Board is Mary Humphrey. Mary, thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for leading this very important part of the history of our school district.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, and Board of Trustees and staff. The purpose of the Walk of Honor is to recognize the efforts and contributions of individuals who have brought distinction, honor, and excellence. Those are our three words we really key on. They've brought distinction, honor, and excellence to Grapevine Colleyville ISD. So on behalf of the GCISD Walk of Honor Board, I'm pleased to formally announce the 2019 Walk of Honor inductees. Some of you may know these individuals as longtime pillars of the community and readily understand why they are worthy of this recognition, but I will nevertheless give you some understand why they are worthy of this recognition, but I will nevertheless give you some brief information about our four honorees. So, in alphabetical order, Billy Hurst Ebersole. A 1955 GHS graduate, Billy has made a lasting impact on the GCISD community through her decades of involvement. She taught first grade at Cannon Elementary for 35 years, she was the 1971 District Teacher of the Year, and she pursues and enjoys staying in contact with her former students. She's very active about that. She is a member of the 36th Club, the Grapevine Historical Society, the Heritage Society, Delta Kappa Gamma, the GHS Ex-Students, and is an honoree in the GHS Hall of Fame. Next honoree is Bill Powers. Bill is a 1949 GHS graduate, where he lettered in football and basketball, becoming a lifelong Mustang fan. Bill can almost always be seen in the stands at the Mustang home games, he's been a fixture there for decades. He's an Army veteran, was a volunteer fireman, then fire marshal, and then assistant fire chief, and then fire chief for Grapevine from 1984 to 1999. He served on the school board, he was on the first Grapevine City Housing Authority, he was on Grapevine's first Planning and Zoning Commission, and he was president of the GHS Ex-Students, and he's honored in the GHS Hall of Fame. Next is Roy Stewart. Roy moved to Grapevine in 1981 at the urging of former GCISD Superintendent Mike Taylor. He dedicated himself to GCISD and the community for decades by serving on educational, business, and community boards. Roy is a Navy veteran, but here in our community, he served as school board vice president, as a Grapevine City Councilman, and as a founding member of the Education Foundation. His honors include Rotarian of the Year, the 1989 DE Box Citizen of the Year, and the Education Foundation's 2003 Distinguished Friend. And some of you may know his wife Joan, who taught and then volunteered for many years at Cannon Elementary and Timberline Elementary. And our fourth honoree this year is Mary Virginia Wall Simmons. Mary Virginia was known for her love and knowledge of all things Grapevine. She was a teacher, a historian, and a community leader. She graduated as valedictorian from Grapevine High School in 1927. She taught in the Grapevine schools after she graduated from SMU. She was the 1989 Woman of the Year, the 2004 Citizen of the Year, and a distinguished faculty honoree in the GHS Hall of Fame. She's memorialized as one of the child skaters in a bronze statue on Grapevine's Main Street. Y'all may have looked for that if you haven't seen it. She was a true icon, and she lived in Grapevine for all of her 98 years. If you're a member of the Walk of Honor Board, will you stand if you're seated and wave if you're standing? It's a few of you here. We, as a Board, I just want you to know, we are committed to honoring and remembering those who came before us and helped create this community that we now enjoy and are so very proud of. We all are standing on the shoulders of people who went before us, and it's really important to us that we instill that idea in our children and really in the entire community. The Board will be hosting our annual induction event on October 25th, it coincides with the rivalry game, football game. The event will include an unveiling of the plaques for this year's honorees, along with a pre-game reception and on-field recognition at Mustang Panther Stadium. And we surely look forward to recognizing these very worthy individuals in October. Thank you.
Mary, we thank you for your leadership, and thank you for the Walk of Honor Board. And I'm really, Paula, thank you for getting the stadium finished this year. And so, last year, we had to have the Walk of Honor induction at the stadium across the street, and so, it's so good to be back in our own home and be able to induct these four very deserving people. You know, we had the grand opening of the stadium during soccer season last spring, and we'll enjoy the first football game this year will be Colville Heritage Panthers versus the South Lake Herald Dragons in just a couple of weeks. And then, the week after that, we'll also host Trinity, Colville Heritage will host Trinity, where we're going to have 17 Medal of Honor, Congressional Medal of Honor recipients at that particular game. And so, there'll be a lot of interest in the stadium, a lot of interest in the game, and every single person that's there on this, on the home side will walk by the honorees of the Walk of Honor. And so, it's really important for us to honor the past. Thank you, Mary, for your work. Let's give the Walk of Honor a round of applause. Our next recognition is for the Connect Back-to-School Fair and the folks that do so much work behind the scenes to be able to do that. We're going to invite Carolyn Ann Walgren and Dr. Cindy Ryan, both from Connect, and Emily Hill, who also works for the school district as the Director of Counseling, but also is a liaison with Connect. If you, we'll ask you to come forward. And Trustee Mindy McClure is going to present you with a certificate of recognition. I'm going to talk a little bit about these three folks as they uncomfortably stand up front, so. First of all, about eight years ago, a couple of volunteers, Cindy and Carolyn Ann saw a need to be able to connect to the different organizations in our community to be, and to be able to help and help some of the folks that are less fortunate. And rather than just looking at a problem and pointing at it, they went to work. Carolyn Ann and Cindy and Emily have worked countless hours behind the scenes to organize one of the biggest and most influential events that we host all year, which is the Connect Back-to-School Fair. Each year, just before the start of school, hundreds of qualified GCISD families attend this event where all of their back-to-school needs are met. It's a shared effort from all facets of our community to see and serve our families. From GCISD, different groups, including transportation services, nutrition services, technology services, counselors, administrators, they all come together to help families finalize registration, to sign up for free and reduced meals, and much more. From our communities, hundreds offer their time and effort. Grace provides clothing to students. The Women's Division of the Grapevine Chamber provides school supplies. The Colville Lions Club provides eye exams. This year, they administered over 150 eye exams, and half of those students needed glasses or a follow-up for glasses. Other businesses offer services like free haircuts, police and fire and civic organizations educate our students on safety. Faith-based organizations offer the manpower of dozens of volunteers, plus, the community at large comes together to donate hundreds of backpacks for our students. It's truly an amazing event and impacts our students every single year. Another incredible part of this event is that not only do the hundreds of students attend the fair and receive all of the support, school supplies are also sent to the campuses of qualified students that somehow missed that particular day. This means that the Connect Back-to-School Fair helped nearly 1,500 students receive the resources they need to be successful this school year alone. The past fair was the eighth annual Connect Back-to-School Fair, and the event has now served over 10,000 students in GCISDs since 2012. Let's thank our volunteers, all of this is volunteer work, folks. A big round of applause to the crew leaders, who along with the help from countless others helped connect in our, people in our community. And I think you can tell by the number of different organizations that are a part of this effort, that their word and their mission about connecting our community for the betterment of our students is certainly being played out in front of us, and we thank you so much for your efforts all year long. It takes about a year to plan for the next Back-to-School Fair, they're just now recovering, they don't want to think about it for next year. But, pretty soon, they'll sit down and start planning on next year's Back-to-School Fair, and we thank you so much for the work and the love and the, really, you know, when we talk about the values in our, in our district about community and about purpose and about innovation, we certainly see in true life the value of purpose and community right here with our Connect Back-to-School Fair. Thank you so much for you all and the leadership and the work you provide for our students. So, our next recognition is for some of our staff members. If you remember, on Father's Day, we received over four inches of rain in less than an hour, and as a result of that rain, the creek flooded behind Cross Timbers, and the gym floor was covered in about two inches of water in a flash flood. Tonight, I want to recognize a group of GCISD staff who all left their families and homes on Father's Day and rushed across Timbers to help clean up after the flood. If you've ever cleaned up after a flood, you know it's nasty work, and they did that on the evening of Father's Day when they were supposed to be with their family. So, Trustee Louis Sullins is going to present each person that left their family to come help us at Cross Timbers with their certificate of recognition. And I will say, I understand that you guys hate this, but we're going to call you up front anyway, because we want to recognize your dedication to GCISD. First of all, we've got Victor McGlothran. Unable to be with us tonight is Mike Driscoll. Next, we want Gary Forrie to come forward. Jim Hoey. Ruben Alvaz. Unable to be with us tonight is Chris Upton, and we've got Alan Smith. We also had a group of staff members who immediately sprung into action from their homes to help in any way they could. So, if you could come forward for your certificate of recognition, we've got Leslie Krzewski. Michelle Lynn. And Ryan Martin.
I've got to say, so, my family was out eating dinner, we were getting text messages aboard, so my wife and I, two kids, went by the school, and I pull up, and Gary's there shutting off power to make sure no electrical issues, and then Victor's there driving the squeegee deal. And it takes a village to take care of it. I mean, he left a steak dinner at his house. Yeah, I mean, seriously, so it takes, people think we should send our school kids to school for nine months a year, and just from 7:40 to 4:10 in the afternoon at the high school, but it takes people like this, everything from scheduling to operations, to security, to maintenance, to make sure these facilities are ready for the kids. So, nice job, even Dr. Ryan was up there and helping, I think he was even driving the squeegee at one point.
Those things are fun.
Yeah, he was up there like, hey, I get to drive something, so.
For a while.
This is a lot of, and I say this because we've got a lot of PTA, and we see things at the elementary school, and you want your schools clean, the facility safe, and ready to go, and these are the ones that do it. They're behind the scenes, so, thank you all very much for, to each department and all that you did for getting it up and running, and thanks for what you do on a daily basis.
Our next recognition is for one of our students. We're going to recognize Grapevine High School Senior Michael Holly. Michael, please come forward, as trustee Jorge Rodriguez is going to present you with a certificate. This summer, Michael studied Arabic in Morocco through the National Security Language Initiative for Youth, which is a scholarship, that's a program of the US Department of State Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs. While in Morocco, Michael lived with a host family, received formal language instruction for over five hours a day, six days of the week, and studied at the Center for Language and Culture, which is a center that strives to encourage intercultural communication with native and international students. This program was launched in 2006 to improve America's ability to communicate in selected critical languages to advance international dialogue and increase American economic global competitiveness. Congratulations. Michael, I would like for you to show us a little bit about what you learned in Morocco. I don't know if anybody here can understand Arabic, so, but we're going to see if you can, you bet, you bet.
So, I'm just, is it on? Yes. I'm just going to say, I speak the Arabic language, and so you say, ana etakilim aluha al adabia, which is, I speak Arabic.
All right. We're going to take your word for it, Michael, so that's, that's good. And I think this is a really, really important thing for our students to be able to do. I don't know about you when you were in high school, but this opportunity to go to Morocco and study Arabic was not exactly something that was offered in Dimmitt, Texas, in the late 70s. And so, our students have so many opportunities, if they want to take advantage of them, they can do so. Michael, we're really proud of the work that you're doing, it's an amazing thing to have that kind of scholarship, and you're going to be a senior at Grapevine High School, is that right?
Yes.
What are you planning to do after, after this year?
So, I, before I left for the exchange program, I submitted my application for an ROTC scholarship, and so, I'd like to go to Georgetown University, I'm currently working on my application to go there, on an ROTC scholarship, so we'll find out in October, between October and April, if I got that scholarship, and then Georgetown will find out in January, because I'll be doing early decision for that application. And there, I would like to study at the School of Foreign Service, majoring in Science, Technology, International Affairs, very cool major that's applicable to what I want to do in the Navy. And then, following that, I'll be required to serve in the military for between six and eight years, and I'd like to do that in probably EOD or on the special, special forces teams like in my family before me. And then, from there, probably graduate school and, you know.
Is anybody proud of this guy? I mean, this is amazing.
Where does he belong to?
This is amazing. So, Michael, you want to introduce any family that you may have with you?
Yeah, so, my mom is there. Her name's Lisa, she does a lot for me, and she really helps me out in school and getting me places and signing me up for stuff. I would not be here without her, absolutely not. And then, my dad, he's kind of what I model, his name's Sean Holly, he's kind of model, what I model myself after, he's the kind of man that I want to be when I grow up, so.
Oh, very nice.
My parents are absolutely amazing, I could not be here without them, absolutely not. And then, my little brother's in the bathroom.
And he's got to be, he's got to be following your footsteps. And so, I'll tell you what, let's have a quick photo op right here, let's get your family. Mr. Danning is the principal of Grapevine High School, if you could join us, and then Matt, if you'll take that quick picture, that'd be great.
Michael, I, Michael, Michael, I have a, I have a question. Do you intend to use the language, I mean, at this point, you mentioned Arabic, but are you planning to utilize other modern languages as well?
Yeah, so, I took French here, at Grapevine for three years. My parents saw, well, my dad's side is Cajun-French, and I have a family that speaks French as well, so I'm currently working on my French outside of school. Morocco really helped with that, because there's heavy French and cross-cultural colonization and that kind of stuff. And so, I'm working on my French as well as my Arabic, so that when I'm in the military, knowing both French and Arabic will be very beneficial, because Africa's very high priority national security-wise.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Michael.
And he just got his OPI back, which is the Arabic test, and we were hoping for him to be advanced beginner, but you got.
No, we were hoping that it'd be novice high.
Oh, sorry, novice high.
And I got intermediate low, which is above my, but that's like what kids usually pass the AP test with.
Very good. Congratulations.
All right.
Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm part of the Alumni Association for NISL, and just for, I know there's some parents in the garden, they told us that they want us to kind of spread the word about it, so I was wondering if I could like take just a few minutes, just kind of talk about NISL, is that all right?
Sure, of course. We want to spread the word. What are we going to do, tell you no?
Just a few, just a minute.
Yeah, tell us all about it.
So, it is a competitively ordered merit-based scholarship that you apply for, you can be 16 years old or older, so for any parents with kids that are coming into their sophomore, junior years, a lot, we have kids between sophomore and graduates of high school that attend, and you can apply for a six-week or a year-long program to study security languages such as Chinese, Russia, Persian, Arabic, and others. And it really changes your whole mindset, shifts you to like think about things from a very global standpoint, and definitely builds lifelong relationships as well. So, if your kids are at all interested in foreign affairs, or a language, or culture, things like that, highly recommend signing up for that and trying to apply, it's very amazing.
Thank you, Michael. Let's give Michael a round of applause. Next, we ask the students and teachers representing the Colville Middle School Honors Band to please come forward. Trustee Jesse Rodriguez is going to present you with certificate of recognition. The Colville Middle School Honors Band recently competed at the state level of the Texas Music Educators Association, or TMEA, the Honor Band Competition. And they placed first at the region and the area levels in order to be one of 16 bands to qualify for the state competition. Joining us tonight, band director Lauren Jones, assistant director Joy Prescott, and some of our eighth grade members of the band. Do we have a microphone that we can... Pass to our students. What we'd like to do is have our students introduce themselves. We all know that you're an eighth grader. But also tell us what instrument you play.
My name is Kylie Tral and I play the clarinet.
My name is Philip Ronan and I play the euphonium.
My name is Catherine Bian and I play the oboe.
My name is Abby Ha and I play the flue.
My name is Sidney Dong and I play clarinet.
My name is Cooper Celine and I play the foil.
Thank you very much. We'd also like to ask Dr. David Aaron Sivia, who's our principal at Colville Middle School. And we have our director of fine arts, David Zarn. We'd have David. I see David back there. If you'll come forward for the photo op. Parents and friends, if you are connected to one of these students... I think we can see who most of you are, but if you could raise your hand and let us know and so that we can thank you for supporting our band students at Colleville Middle School. Let's give these folks another round of applause. Next, we would like to recognize four of our schools that have been named National PTA Schools of Excellence. This is a program that supports and celebrates partnerships between PTAs and schools to enrich the educational experience and overall well-being for all students. To receive this distinction, PTA and school administrators made a year-long commitment to identifying and implementing an action plan for family and community engagement based on PTA's national standards for family-school partnerships. And they will now hold a distinction of the National School of Excellence for the next two years. Joining us this evening are principals and PTA presidents from each of our four honored campuses. As I call your name, please come forward. And trustee Doug Noel will present you with certificate recognizing your accomplishments. First of all, from Dove Elementary, principal Heather Landrum, and last year's PTA president, Sarah Carlock, and current PTA president Gretchen Young. From Heritage Elementary School, principal Jill Hemi, and last year's PTA president Samantha Connor.
Yeah, Regina Lucero.
Oh, okay.
PTA president.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
There we go. From Silver Lake Elementary, principal Nicole Whiteside, and last year's PTA president Our current president is Heidi Nesta. And from Grapevine Middle School, Dr. Laura Kahler and PTA president Rachel Canafax. Additionally, we'd like to thank Kim Farvis, president of the GCISD Council of PTAs for her leadership and guidance, and ask Kim to come forward as well. Let's give them a round of applause and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Last recognition is for our Grapevine-Colleville Education Foundation. It's actually an annual update of the education foundation. At this time, I'd like to introduce the executive director of the Grapevine-Colleville Education Foundation and Grapevine High School graduate Sue Franks for the foundation annual report.
Is this a great school district or what?
It is, all right.
I'm telling you. And a little personal note here, I'm sorry, but I'm so proud of my brother, Bill Powers, who's being inducted into the Walk of Honor. And he is absolutely thrilled and I am so proud of him. I was hoping Kim, if she... Kim is on our board of the foundation and Sean Shope is the president of our board. I don't think I see any other directors, except of course, Dr. Ryan and Lisa Pardot serve on our board, so. On behalf of the Grapevine-Colleville Education Foundation, LeAnn, who is our operations manager, and I want to thank the GCISD administration and the Board of Trustees for entrusting the foundation, the district's sports marketing program at our Mustang Panther Stadium. Even though last year was challenging to a lot of people, we have a beautiful stadium with our state-of-the-art digital scoreboard. And everyone is looking forward to Colleville Heritage High School and Grapevine High School Mustang and all of these wonderful football games that we'll get to experience in our new stadium. We do want to recognize and thank our four anchor sponsors. These are longtime supporters of GCISD and the foundation. And they are Mike Davis State Farm, Schrader Orthodontics, Baylor Scott &amp; White Grapevine, and Sewell Motor Cars. These are all longtime supporters of the foundation and this school district. So if and when you have a chance and opportunity, please thank these sponsors, because they have been generous and long-term supporters. I know they would appreciate your thank. Now, we are thrilled to present the district with a check for $30,000 for its portion of the sports marketing program. If board president Lisa Pardot and Dr. Ryan and our operations manager... Come on, LeAnn and our president. We'll get everybody in. Come on, Kim, get in our... You're on the board. We will present you with a big check reproduction of the real check.
Ready? One, two, three. Got it. Thank you. Very nice. Thank you.
And I do want to thank the Board of Trustees, because all of our activities, y'all were so responsive and helpful for our new educators' luncheon. Y'all participated and supported it, and we do appreciate it.
Sue, I have a question. You didn't write that check out to Lisa Pardot, though, did you?
I can't even write a check, so I don't...
Good.
You're so bad. But I think it's to the district. I can it today, Ann. She has it. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you very much, and we do appreciate the support of the education foundation. Over three and a half million dollars of grants and monies back to GCISD in their history. And so, it's very, very important to the success of our school district. And most importantly, signals the support of our community for GCISD. So thank you, Sue, and LeAnn, and the board members that are here for your support. And that concludes tonight's recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Move on to open forum. We had no one sign up for speech. Okay. Move on to reports of the superintendent. Item A, act on scheduling a meeting to adopt the 2019 tax rate. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, these next several items are for the prerequisites to be able to move forward with finances in the school district. And so I'll turn this one quickly over to Deanne Mooney.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ryan. The Texas Property Tax Code, Section 26.05, requires the Board of Trustees to adopt a tax rate by resolution in a public meeting before the latter day of September 30th or the 60th day after the date the certified tax roll is received by the taxing unit. And so what we're asking the board tonight is to go ahead and schedule that meeting for the tax rate adoption, which will be on our September 16th board meeting. We will be bringing the information forward for the tax rate adoption.
All right. Thank you, Deanne. The recommendations for board trustees to schedule the meeting to adopt the 2019 tax rate for the September 16th, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the Administration Building, 3051 Ira E. Woods, Grapevine, Texas.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I have a recommendation or a motion. Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
Thank you, Jesse. In a second.
I'll say it.
Louie, thank you. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item B, act on agreement for purchase of attendance credits.
As everyone knows, we are a Robin Hood district and you have to kind of pick your poison, if you will, the way that we have to be able to pay the state the money that they take for our Robin Hood payment. There are five different options. There's really only one that makes sense for our school district. I'll ask Deanne again to take us through this particular item.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ryan. So we are no longer a Chapter 41 district, although I've been saying that for 20 years. So when I say Chapter 41, I really mean Chapter 49. Because what that means is that Chapter 49 of the Texas Education Code now addresses recapture. And so tonight, we are asking the board to approve the agreement on the purchase of attendance credit. The new provisions of Texas Education Code require districts that have an excess of revenue above their Title I, Tier 1 entitlement. Those additional funds are paid to the state to be distributed to other districts within the state. And the way... There's several options for reducing that revenue. And we are recommending that we use option three, which is to purchase the attendance credit from the state. We have used that option for many years, so that is not something that is new. But we... The board does have to approve the contract. And they also have to approve... Give Dr. Ryan the authority to submit the contract via the TEA online system. And so tonight, we're asking that you approve it, but also give that authority to the superintendent. And there is very specific language that has to be read and put into the minutes. So when Dr. Ryan makes his recommendation, that required language will be in there.
Yes, so I'll have a recommendation. And then after the vote, I'll have to read a paragraph that goes into the minutes. So the recommendations for board trustees to approve the agreement for purchase of attendance credits for the 2019-20 school year and to delegate contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code, Chapter 49, to the district superintendent.
Do you have a motion for the recommendation? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation and also have read into the minutes that for the 2019-20 school year, the board delegated contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code 11.1511(c)(4) to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under TEC 48.257 and TEC Chapter 49, subchapters A and D, and the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education is authorized under TEC 49.006. This included the approval of the agreement for the purchase of attendance credits.
Thank you, Jesse. Do you have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item C, act on the 2019 certified appraisal roll certification of the 2019 collection rate.
This is another part of the same type of equation. Deanne, if you'll take us through this one, please.
Okay. The Texas Property Code, Section 26.01, requires the chief appraiser of the Tarrant Appraisal District and Dallas County Appraisal District to certify the property appraisal role to the district's tax assessor by July 25th. And then that report is to be submitted to the board for acceptance by August 1st or as soon thereafter as possible. It also requires the collector to certify an estimated collection rate for the current year to the board. So tonight, we are just presenting to you the July 25th certified values for your approval.
Thank you, Deanne. The recommendations for board trustees to declare the certified appraisal roles provided by the Tarrant Appraisal District and Dallas County Appraisal District as GCIC's official 2019 appraisal role.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Maybe we accept the superintendent's recommendation. Thank you, Mindy. In a second.
I'll say it.
Doug, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item D, act on Texas teacher evaluation and support system, certified appraisers and second appraisers.
Yes, so the district appraises teachers annually using the T-test method in accordance with state law and administrative regulations. And the board is each year to approve a list of certified appraisers who may be asked to provide a second appraisal of a teacher upon the request. All of these appraisers have gone through the appropriate training. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the list of T-test certified appraisers and second appraisers for the 2019-20 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I thought we had... Did we have a...
It should be a separate page.
A separate page. We all received... Did you receive that? We have a motion... We have recommendations. Do you have a motion?
I move we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Doug. In a second. Mindy, thank you very much. Any discussion?
Yeah, we do have that list.
Becky has a copy of it right there.
Oh, did we?
It was in the bag.
It was in there. We left it in there. Sorry. Okay. I just thought it was a separate list.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Item E, act on donations at Grapevine Middle School.
Yes, at GMS, we had several band instruments that were sent to Bell's Music Shop to be repaired this summer. The original quote was about $2,800. But when he returned the instruments, he indicated that there were more repairs that were needed. And he actually donated the labor and work on those instruments to the tune of about $5,000 in labor costs. So, the recommendation is for the board trustees to accept the very generous donation of band instrument labor and cost and parts valued at $5,000 from Bell's Music Shop.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I have a recommendation of a motion. Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
Thank you, Jesse. In a second.
I'll say it.
Lou, thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Yes, very much. I was looking to see if by chance he would be here. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero.
Yeah, he's in Keller, apparently.
Okay. Yeah, I'll look to him. Move on to item F, bond underwriting services.
Yes, this is a part... These next two items are connected. Deanne, I'll let you take us through this one briefly.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ryan. When we go out to sell our bonds, we really rely heavily on the underwriting services that help us generate that demand for investors and those relationships they have with the investors. So, the underwriters ultimately play a big significant role in determining what the final cost of the bonds will be. Back in 2016, when we went out to sell the bonds, we did an RFQ, a request for qualifications for underwriting services. And at that time, we brought eight firms to the board for approval. And we... In that RFQ, we had specific language that allowed the district to add or delete underwriters to that pool. And so what we're doing tonight is bringing you three firms. For whatever reason, it could be that the firm did not have... Things changed since 2016. We may not have had some firms that did business in Texas, as well as having key personnel that have changed at firms. And so based on that information, we're bringing three firms tonight for the board to approve to add to our existing pool of eight firms. And those three firms are FTN Financial Capital Markets, Piper Jeffrey &amp; Company, and Robert W. Baird &amp; Company.
So we're adding these three to our existing.
It doesn't mean that we will actually, you know, that we're going to use them on this bond transaction, but this is... They will be added to our pool to be used for the upcoming bond transaction as any other bond transactions we have in the future.
Thank you, Deanne. The recommendations for board trustees to approve the following firms to the current pool of bond underwriters, FTN Financial Capital Markets, Piper Jeffrey &amp; Company, and Robert W. Baird &amp; Company.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Maybe we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation. Thank you, Mindy. In a second. Becky, thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, Deanne, I have a question. I'm assuming that, of course, and it's probably a silly question to ask, but I will. We've done the due diligence on these three companies, right? I mean, is there...
Yes, we did. We actually... They submitted the same information that we did back in 2016, just for the qualification purposes and met all the requirements.
Okay. So by us adding them, like, and I think you stated this, it doesn't mean that we'll be using them, but they will be in that pool for consideration?
In the pool. Yes.
And they understand that as well, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. The previous companies are not eliminated from that pool, though, right?
No. We're just adding three more to our, yes, the total pool will be eleven firms.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven-zero. Move on to Item G, Consider and Take Action on an Order Authorizing the Issuance of Grapevine Colleyville Independent School District's Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds, Series Two Thousand Nineteen, Appointing a Pricing Officer and Delegating to the Pricing Officer the Authority to Approve the Bonds, Establishing Certain Parameters for the Approval of Such Matters by the Pricing Officer, Approving the Use of Paying Agent/Registrar Agreement, Engaging Bond Counsel, Leveling an Annual Advalorm Tax for the Payment of the Bonds, and Enacting Other Provisions Related to the Subject.
So we've got quite a few things rolled up all into one item. Thank you for reading that so diligently. And so this is a pretty, pretty big item that, that we're talking about as far as the remainder of the two thousand sixteen bond. So I'll turn it over to Diane. We'll have a brief presentation, and then I'll provide the recommendation.
Okay. So in August of two thousand sixteen, the district sold one hundred eighty-eight million six hundred fifty-five thousand of the two hundred forty-eight million nine hundred seventy-five thousand bonds that were authorized on May seventh, two thousand sixteen. Tonight, the recommendation is to sell the remaining sixty million three hundred and twenty thousand, possibly next month. I know that was a lot of information that you read, but basically, the gist of it is, is that what will be brought for approval is an order that will give the pricing officer, which is me or Dr. Ryan, the ability to sell bonds, but there are parameters that those bonds have to be within these certain parameters before they can be sold. And so tonight, we have Josh McLaughlin here from BOK Financial Services, and he is going to give us a presentation just first over, just our overall debt management program, and then he'll be presenting the preliminary financing plan for this specific bond sale.
If I can learn how to work this.
Okay. Find it a little help? All right, there we go. Thank you, Kristen, and welcome, Josh.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. It's good to see everyone again, and you can tell I am not very technologically advanced. So before we talk about selling new bonds or how you're managing your portfolio, I just want to recap how the district manages its portfolio. If you look at the first page, since two thousand and five, the district has implemented several debt management strategies, whether that's using variable rate debt within its portfolio to buy down the interest costs, refinancing your bonds at a lower rate, or in fact, prepaying your bonds prior to final maturity. But of these methods, you have saved taxpayers more than ninety point six million dollars since two thousand and five. Let me say that number again, ninety point six million dollars. Something to be pretty proud of. In terms of your variable rate debt, you currently have twenty-two point two million outstanding at an interest rate of one point three-four percent. You used a portion of your tax collections last year to buy down that principal, but that is saving the district money roughly eight point five million. We go to the next page. In terms of refunding programs, since two thousand and five, you've done eight different refunding programs, basically refinancing over three hundred million of your existing bonds at a lower interest rate, saving taxpayers just under fifty million dollars. And more recently, you've begun to prepay your bonds since two thousand and eight. And really, if we look at just the last three years, you have prepaid almost thirty-four million dollars of bonds prior to final maturity, saving taxpayers thirty-two point four million of future interest costs. Again, something to be very proud of.
I think that's a really important thing for us all to, to recognize.
In terms of your existing bonds outstanding, your portfolio's compasses about three hundred and eighty-two million. Your bonds are repaid over a twenty-two-year basis right now. For every dollar you borrow, basically, the interest cost is about fifty-five cents. But if you compare that to sort of a home mortgage, a thirty-year home mortgage, for every dollar you borrow, you're paying back basically sixty-seven cents. So that tells you how well you've managed your portfolio. Every time we go sell bonds, we have to go through the bond rating process. And typically, you would think the bond rating process is the district's ability to repay its existing bonds. But really, the debt repayment is only about twenty-five percent of your overall bond rating. The other ratings are the financial condition of the district, the economic condition of the local economy, and the management of the district's portfolio. In terms of Moody's, you're currently rated double-A one. There's only one rating better, which is triple-A. Currently, there are only seven districts that have a higher rating within the state in GCISD, which puts you in the ninety-ninth percentile. In terms of S and P, you have a double-A rating. Obviously, that's two notches below triple-A, but S and P does not give a single school district in the state a triple-A rating. So you're only one notch below their highest rating, if you will. There are only twenty school districts within the state that have a rating higher than you, which puts you in the ninety-eight percentile. So that's a great reflection on how you've managed your portfolio and your financial condition. In terms of looking at other districts within the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex, one of the leading indicators used by the rating agencies is basically your principal as a percentage of your tax value. Out of the sixty-nine school districts within Dallas, Denton, Collin, and Tarrant Counties, GCISD ranks fifty-fifth as a percentage of their principal outstanding to your taxable assessed valuation, meaning it's extremely low, and you've been good stewards of your taxpayers' dollars. As we talked about earlier, you had a bond election in May of two thousand sixteen. It was roughly two hundred and forty-nine million. And you'll see a few pictures of these well-constructed, beautiful facilities that you've been able to accomplish with those monies so far. So far from that bond program, we have sold one issue. It was at an all-in interest rate of two point eight percent. Again, two point eight percent for thirty, or twenty-five-year debt, that's pretty outstanding. You have sixty million left over. One of the goals from the two thousand sixteen bond program is you would repay all short-term assets over their useful life. That is not an issue. You've been able to do that so far, and you will be on this issue. The only capacity thing is, in order to sell bonds, we have to live up to the state mandated fifty-cent test, which is not an issue. In the district's case, you're well below fifty cents, not an issue. From a tax rate management standpoint, every year, the district's Board of Trustees has basically three options when it comes to a debt portfolio. You can adopt the minimum INS tax rate necessary to cover the current year bond payment. You can maintain your existing tax rate, which is the district has historically done, and prepay bonds, or you could do any combination thereof. Even after that, this particular sale, you will still have this option on an annual basis. Out of the three hundred and eighty-two million, you have two hundred and ninety-seven million of your bonds are eligible to be repaid prior to final maturity. So this is your bond portfolio as it stands right now. So as part of your budgeting process, every year, based upon your new tax values, you could determine how many bonds you would like to prepay. This is sort of a recap of the district's two thousand eighteen-nineteen debt service budget. The number I want to focus on is the one at the very bottom. Given the district is a June thirtieth fiscal year, you really have to account for the following August payments, because you won't have collected enough taxes to make those payments, because you'll adjust your new tax rate. So you really have to account for that in your calculations each and every year. So at the end of this August, the district is projecting a fund balance of twenty-six point four million dollars, roughly. So the question becomes, what is an adequate fund balance? We would tell you, based upon the compensation of the district's tax base, that you want to keep around forty percent of your maximum annual debt service payment. Based upon your maximum annual debt service payment, which occurred last year, which is roughly fifty-five million, we would tell you, you want to keep a fund balance of just under twenty-two million. So at the projected fund balance of twenty-six point four million, you would have roughly four point four million that you could use to prepay bonds, if you would like to. All right. The rest of the presentation talks about the upcoming bond sale. So the plan would be to sell the remaining sixty point three-two million dollars of bonds from your two thousand sixteen bond program, probably within the next thirty days. After this bond sale, you would have no more additional bonds to sell from that bond program. If you wanted to sell additional bonds, you would have to go out for another bond election. In terms of interest rates, this is a look at the Bond Buyer Index, which gives you a general indication of what municipal interest rates are doing. And as you can see from the beginning of the year, municipal interest rates have done nothing but go down. In fact, in the last two or three weeks, they have gone down dramatically, creating a very good opportunity for the district to sell bonds and lock in an historical rate. Part of the reason of that, obviously, you hear on the news, tariff talk, and unfortunately, the dreaded R-word, recession. I'm not saying there is one, but that's, that's sort of where we stand right now. So based upon these assumptions, based upon your current values, and as part of this financing plan, we are projecting the district will prepay thirteen point six-two million of its outstanding bonds during next, or during the current fiscal year, saving taxpayers an additional eight point, or nine point eight million dollars of future interest cost. That is part of this financing plan. For purposes tonight, we've assumed the bonds would be sold based upon current market rates plus twenty-five basis points. The reality is, if we sold today, interest rates would be below three percent. We're selling these bonds over the same amortization period as your current debt portfolio, so instead of selling twenty-five-year bonds like we've historically done, we're only selling twenty-two-year bonds. In terms of your values, current year values net of frozen is roughly fifteen point two billion. We've assumed zero growth in your values going forward. So your bond program will be able to be based upon current year values. Again, the district will not receive any state funding assistance, and you could see the tax collection rate.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Not until we get a motion.
You can't. Presentation.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. In terms of sale results, of the sixty point three million, if you sold bonds, we're projecting an interest rate of three point oh-five percent. Again, if you sold today, it'd be less than three percent. In fact, you'd be much closer to that two-eighty you received three years ago, back on your original bond series. Again, there would be no pressure on your interest and sinking fund tax rates. Your total net bond payments would be roughly eighty-three million dollars. So on a dollar of principal, it would be roughly thirty-eight cents of interest, which is below the fifty-five you're currently paying, and well below the sixty-seven on a home mortgage. Again, no addition of, or extension of the repayment of the bonds. In terms of looking at globally at the two thousand sixteen bond program, voters were told a projected tax rate increase of twelve point eight-one percent. You'll be able to finalize this bond program at its current tax rate of thirty-five point six-seven. So you're five point one-five cents below what you communicated to voters at the time of the election. In terms of bond payments, you're eighty-three million dollars below, based upon the interest rates that you will lock in. As we talked about earlier, what the item in front of you is a parameters order. This is something the district has historically done when we've sold bonds. It allows Dr. Ryan and Ms. Mooney to move forward with the sale of bonds, subject to certain parameters. Obviously, we can't sell more than the sixty point three-two million. The all-in interest cost cannot exceed four percent. Again, if we sold today, it'd be less than three. The final maturity of the bonds would be August fifteenth of two thousand forty-one, and we'd have to get this done in the next hundred and eighty days. The reality is, we're trying to get this done in the next sixty days. We're here tonight, we would hopefully be in a position to have everything wrapped up in terms of all the items necessary to sell bonds by September sixth, and then we could sit there and watch the market and make an educated decision on when to sell bonds, assuming market conditions that exist today are the same here in a couple of weeks. We would probably sell the week of the ninth, in which time, the district would receive its funds on September twenty-sixth. I know I went through that relatively quickly. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Josh. The recommendations for the Board of Trustees to approve the order authorizing the issuance and sale of the bonds, as stated.
Recommendation of a motion?
I move we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, in a second. Lily, thank you. Becky?
So, yeah, can you go back to, actually, hmm, which, no. I don't think you went too far. You mentioned the twenty-two-year?
I'll need to something.
Yeah. So essentially, what you're saying is, since we passed this bond in two thousand sixteen, we're going to be able to structure this so that we're not extending even farther our obligation, even though it's three years past the election.
That's absolutely correct. So historically, every time the district has sold bonds, we've done, or new money bonds, if you will, we've done twenty-five years from the date of sale.
Right.
At the time of the election and the actual election order, we told voters it would be up to forty, even though we only sell bonds over twenty-five. But given the growth in the district's tax value and looking at the district's portfolio, there's no reason that you would have to extend all twenty-five years here, so we could keep your existing repayment date the same in two thousand forty-one.
That's really good news. The other question that I had is, I think when we sold the twenty sixteen bonds, we had some sort of opportunity for GCISD people to purchase, have first dibs. Are we going to be able to do that again this time?
If that is the pleasure of the Board, absolutely.
Yes, we can, we can do that.
Because those went quickly, if I recall. I don't, I cannot, it's been.
I can't remember, but I know we did, we did put something on the internet, on our website.
Okay.
We can work with the underwriter on that.
Okay.
They did go quickly.
They went?
They did go quickly.
They went extremely fast.
Yeah. Jesse?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I want to, first of all, I want to make sure I understand the recommendation. And then, second, I have a question in terms of the wording. The recommendation is for the Board of Trustees to approve the order authorizing the issuance and the sale of the bonds. So it's almost two things. Based on, if we pass this and approve the order, the, part of the order would delegate the pricing authority to Dr. Ryan as the superintendent and/or the CFO, correct?
Correct.
So if we approved the motion as it was read, it would authorize both of you all to do that, correct? Either or.
That's how we've done it in the past.
I understand. I just want to make sure. And, but then it says the sale of the bonds, and yet, both in the slide presentation and through the language here, it says that administration recommends the selling of the remaining sixty mil next month, which would be September. So my question is, does the recommendation have to reflect that? It reflects the order, which states who has the authority, but it doesn't designate a timeframe. So based on the recommendation as read, and you're asking us to approve, do we need to stipulate, since the recommendation in the language and in the presentation was September? Is my question.
I don't think the recommendation had September in it.
The recommendation had February.
The recommendation did not have September mentioned.
I understand that, but should it, or does it? Because I'm saying that, based on the presentation and the presentation made now, as well as the language here states, that the administration recommends that that action be taken next month. So my question is, should the recommendation include the month of September? Or are we saying, we're approving this as it is with the order, but if the administration changes her mind, then it doesn't have to be in September, it can be in October? So all I'm trying to do is make sure that we all understand what we're being asked to vote for.
So if you look on page twenty-eight, it has the exact parameters, and it includes the, it says the sale must be completed by February. So it's just suggested that we're doing it now so that we could purchase this and the bonds in September, but the actual order talks about, asks to be completed within a hundred and eighty days, which puts it out there.
I understand that, Dr. Ryan. I'm just asking whether the wording of the recommendation itself needs to restate that, or it needs to?
It's just approving the order, and that's included in the order. That's my.
The parameters are included in the order.
Right.
In this information, I can't remember. It's section, I think it's section three.
I understand that. I'm just saying.
Needs to be in our recommendation.
That's all I'm saying, is based on the recommendation.
No.
That's all I'm saying.
If we do, then we would be tied to September.
I'm trying to get a clarification.
In the recommendation says to approve the order, so you're drawing specific attention to the parameters that must be met, and it's got the five. And the fifth one is the sale must be completed prior to February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. So the recommendation says. So the recommendation says approval of the order, so therefore it does not need to have.
If we do the September, Jesse, we're tying his.
I, I understand that, but if you read the paragraph just before the attachment, it says by authorizing a parameter order. We don't make reference to a parameter order in our recommendation. Then if you read the next to the, the last sentence, it says this order would delegate. So all I'm trying to do is get a clarification, guys. I'm trying to figure out whether the authorization that we're giving to Dr. Ryan, as well as Diane, and based on the recommendation, if you read before that, that the push is for the September, I understand that. But all I'm asking is that, should then the recommendation reflect that? That's all I'm asking.
No. I'm not going to.
I don't think so.
I think it currently gives them the, gives the flexibility.
Somebody's experience, I mean, because we're all guessing here, and we're making assumptions.
Not guessing at all, Jesse.
I mean, you're making assumptions.
No, we're doing exactly what we've done in the past, and we've never tied it down to a specific. We're giving him the order of the time period of the, that can be.
All I'm trying to make sure is all our language is consistent.
I understand.
And if, if everyone else feels that that's indeed the case, then I'm okay.
I feel like it is, as well the board feels like it is.
Okay.
Is that it? Okay. Did you have another question?
Uh, no.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on it?
Just want to clarify. So all of these bonds issued will be twenty-two-year term. It won't be like the original, when we first went out with the bonds, a hundred, a hundred and eighty-eight million, we had different terms for different amounts. This is all, all sixty million will be a twenty-two-year term.
No. So the final, the final bond will be paid in August of two thousand forty-one, so a twenty-two-year term. But you will be actually selling annual principal of these bonds. So if you will, there will be a bond maturing each and every year between now and two thousand forty-one. So the final payment on the entire issue would be August fifteenth of two thousand forty-one, but it's not a sixty million dollar bill of maturity.
And we do that because we ladder out bonds based on asset lives for technology, those things that have a shorter.
Right. Okay. And are all these callable? Will we call them earlier?
So the way it's presented right now, um, there would be two call features on it. One would be a seven-year call, and one would be a four-year call on a certain amount of the bonds. And that'd be subject to market conditions. And we're doing that, looking at the district's callable bonds in the future, and not knowing exactly when the district may have another bond election. We want to give you the flexibility, again, to manage that portfolio by calling debt.
There is some really great news in here. This is going on our website, correct? Yes, ma'am. So that's just, that's just tremendous savings.
Yes, it is.
It's just tremendous. And that word really, because there's so much misinformation out there, that this word, and I look at someone out there that does a lot of our, that does a lot of the numbers out there, I think this is something that we really need to, to spread the word. And I really, I want, yes, it is a great story, and I want to thank Josh McLaughlin. He's, he's, I've worked with him for twenty, I don't know, a lot of years, since I've been at GCISD. And if you go around and ask in the state, you will hear that he is one of the best. So, um, I did want to appreciate, put that appreciation out there for him, because he does a great job.
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Any chance that the bond rate continues to tank?
Say it again.
Any chance their bond rates continue to tank to? She said she, you want the rest of the state, so you might.
That is a great question. So the way we look at interest rates right now, um, obviously you've heard the word tariff out there. You've seen how things can drop in a given day. When we look at where interest rates are right now, we think the market is basically baked in two interest rate cuts by the Federal Reserve. One in September, one later this year. The reality is, we don't know if that's going to come to fruition or not. What I would tell you is, bond rates can actually go down further from here, of what's going to, it's going to take some more bad news. Is that entirely possible? Yes. We're one tweet away, as we like to say now in the social media world, from having utter chaos in the, uh, in the bond market. But with that said, knowing that you can lock in an interest rate of less than three percent in today's market, we sort of manage on a conservative approach, bird in the hand. I would take a rate of less than three percent, lock it in, and move on down the road. You're never going to really time the highs and lows of the market. If I could, I wouldn't be here tonight. I'd be on a beach trading my own portfolio. But that's why we give ourselves a six-month parameter. So if we do feel like there's another run in the bond market, and rates will go down lower, we don't have to implement it right away. We've given ourselves a hundred and eighty days.
You know, I'm going to add something to that, since I make my living in this industry, is that your word tank, meaning it goes down to zero, it's not going to go that far. They're looking at a half a percent, like he was talking in the two quarters. And the reason we're lowering it is due to international interest rates are either at zero or negative. We're the only one that's positive, and they're not going to touch interest rates typically six months to nine months prior to a presidential election. So it's allowing people to still buy our goods and so forth. And if you remember, anything, we're still at thirty-year historical lows on interest rates. Which, yes, interest rates crept up over the last couple of years, in verse it was ten years ago, but we're still at thirty-year historical lows. So anything below three that we can take, go. I mean, it's, this is because of what y'all have done and being in this position. I mean, yeah, you can sit around and wait and wait, but we're right now at a management risk within this country in terms of making one comment, and depending on what the market does.
But it's not below three right now. It is at three.
So for purposes bliss, we've, we've cushioned the numbers twenty-five basis points, but if we were actually selling today, your rate would be much closer to two point eight percent.
Okay.
Because you got to realize, are you talking about the thirty-year treasury, the ten-year treasury, the two-year treasury? There's a lot of different rates that are consumed. Most people think of the thirty-year fixed, but everything's based off of the two and the ten-year treasury.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, sir.
Nice job. Thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it.
Seeing other questions with, uh, about dollars in favor. Motion carries seven zero. That is it for, um, action items. We'll move on to information only. Update on the two thousand sixteen bond program.
Speaking of bonds, uh, so, uh, now we're, have the several results from, uh, the two thousand sixteen bond program. Paula, would you like to introduce, please?
Sure. We have Gary Radamaker with us tonight, and I was looking back, the last time that we had, we were together was July twenty-second. And, uh, I, I remember what the state of our progress was at that point in time. And trying to remind myself that a lot happens in the last two months, as it did again this time around. Uh, and really, um, I do want to go ahead and, and publicly note that Lee Lewis, um, had our buildings at a, at a level and a condition this time around that was better than it was in two thousand seventeen. And they are still tracking on, mostly on schedule with where they said we would be with our facilities. We knew going into this, work was going to continue through the month of September for some, and for other, uh, facilities like Grapevine High School, it was going to extend further into the semester. So a lot of work was completed in that last month. There was coexisting with, uh, the return of our teachers, and then getting, getting the buildings ready for the first day of school. Along with that, there are several people that I need to publicly commend for their work in actually coming behind the contractor and having our school district ready to go, especially in those eight facilities. Certainly begins with our custodial staff and some of the others in our facility services ranks that, um, took a build, took buildings that were, um, really in a difficult state and in less than four days and a weekend, uh, really brought them to a condition that most people wouldn't have recognized. Along with that, uh, our security technician spent a lot of time, our technology department was amazing at redeploying all of the devices that we have, uh, that were picked up and moved and held in a secure site during the summer, and then redeployed, whether that's in your library, at the front desk, yeah, projectors in a classroom, all of those types of things. If you think about the number of devices that we have, uh, they were engaged in doing that. Obviously, our construction oversight team spent a lot of hours and time, uh, in, in trying to get everything ready and having it. And so, um, it was really a very good, um, first week of school. I have to step back and look at it globally, because in the moment, it didn't feel like it. Uh, because if you're the person whose room is not quite the way you expected it, then it wasn't a great experience for you. But when I step back and I look at all eight of those campuses and where we were on the first day of school, um, it was, it was a good place to be. So, Gary?
Wow. Any questions? That was good. Thank you, Paula. Good evening, trustees. Dr. Ryan, thanks for having us back again, uh, this evening. I'm going to run through this fairly quickly, um, but as, as Paula mentioned, I won't repeat all that. But there's a significant amount of work that's going on, and down in it, we're, we're sort of in the middle, kind of of what Josh was talking about, getting that work done. And so, um, a, a lot of folks deserve a lot of credit. We'll start with the two thousand nineteen renovation projects. The HVAC units have been, they started at Grapevine High School. The final chiller connection, uh, is going to be made during Thanksgiving break. The controls that, that do control all the HVAC, uh, systems in the district, they're about eighty-five percent, uh, finished. The fire suppression system or sprinkler piping is about seventy percent installed and tested. The resurfacing of the tennis courts is now complete. And, uh, you'll see a common theme through here, the aluminum storefront, and I'll explain that as we get on. We're, we're awaiting arrival of storefront, uh, for control vestibules. And I, I will say that we're not waiting for the vestibule to be controlled. We're waiting for parts and pieces. We're, we're remaining, the, the control vestibules remain as they were, safe. But we're waiting for some parts and pieces, and a lot of it has to do with aluminum storefronts, just really kind of the timing of all this. There's a significant amount of work going on this summer, and that, a lot of, a lot of secure vestibule or control vestibules are happening across the state of Texas. So, um, the parking lot paving pour back has begun. If you've driven by there, there's a lot of rock. There's a lot of the, the drainage piping has been installed, and so they get, in fact, I thought they were going to try to get a pour today. I did not go by there. But that's in process. The control vestibule for, the new control vestibule is framed up, and it's, uh, ready to go. Again, waiting around the Thanksgiving break for that storefront to, to arrive, and then it'll be installed. The Learning Commons scope of work is complete. Again, storefront doors, uh, so there's some makeshift, um, uh, doors there as well that allow functionality to keep happening. The new ones are, are yet to, to arrive. And then the door hardware and occupancy sensors, uh, continues throughout, which is part of, again, your controls and HVAC systems, uh, throughout the campus. Just a few shots here, um, probably three or four days old. You can see really just the level of finish here on the Learning Commons. Really an exciting place with new lighting, carpeting, furnishings, et cetera. So really great spaces. Outside, again, the, uh, control vestibule on the top, you see in the far, on that left-hand side, the, the storefront, that's really where it'll be. And then on the bottom is your, is your parking lot repair work there. So a lot of the, I guess they did get a, a pour in yesterday on that far right-hand side picture, so, um, lots happening there. OC Taylor Elementary School, uh, control vestibule doors scheduled to arrive this week. A, a good amount of, uh, the shipment for those are happening, happened today and tomorrow. And then some of it will happen over the Thanksgiving break. So, uh, the Rubber Cove base, the entry and the hallways were installed, HVAC unit controlled. The, um, and Lee Lewis is working to integrate them with the district management team. So that, working, uh, closely with Kevin and his team, um, and Jim and their team to, to, uh, make sure that that is a seamless operation installation. Installing door hardware and occupancy sensors, and then the stage lights are being installed this week. So lots happening at OC Taylor. Again, very similar, um, conditions at these Learning Commons, really good-looking finishes, and the, really the state of the, the spaces are, are such that, um, they're in good shape. They're really ready for, for final, final touch-ups. At Glen Hope and Grapevine Elementary in Silver Lake, um, all similar campuses, all similar scope of work. Again, you can kind of see the, the common theme there, aluminum storefront and vestibules are coming this week. The interior lights for the Learning Commons, uh, they continue to kind of arrive, you know, sporadically, so they're installed when they get them. Working around, obviously, at this point, uh, the operation of the campus, and so hopefully, uh, that's going better than it was a week or two ago. So, um, the HVAC controls are installed, um, integration with the district's management team, that's, that's ongoing. PA systems were installed, again, line items in the bond, uh, adding PA systems, installing door hardware, occupancy sensors, and then the light poles in the, at Silver Lake, uh, were, were played, were replaced, so. You can see some pictures here at Glen Hope. And really the conditions of the, I wanted to explain the control vestibules, the, the doors that we're waiting on are the second set of doors. So there's nobody walking in and out of the building. They're still controlled, they're still locked, they're still as they were. The second set of doors will come, and then that full feature will happen as, as, as it's designed. Grapevine Elementary, similar, new lighting, flooring, furnishings. And then the addition is, is happening. We've got Pierce Pour, great beams being formed for the addition. And so, uh, we're hoping for no rain. I don't think it's going to ever rain again. Silver Lake Elementary School, similar, uh, similar finish out, punch lists are being done, um, and worked on, so. Colleyville Middle School, casework in the new receptionist area is installed now. Frames for the entry vestibule are installed. The Learning Commons scope of work is complete, uh, again, for the storefront doors and then the hardware occupancy sensors. So all these campuses, you can see they're sort of at the same level of finish out. Some shots of Colleyville Middle School. Cross Timbers, um, again, same, very similar, uh, to the previous. Some lighting at the Learning Commons have been installed, so we're still waiting on some of the other lights. Working, constructing the tech hub station in the Learning Commons, that's coming along nice. We'll install the new carpet tile this week. Again, door hardware and sensors, and the control vestibule frame is ready, so, or ready, waiting. Everybody have the? Exterior control vestibule there.
Gary, can you go back to the Learning Commons and Cross Timbers? Did we lower the ceiling in there at all, or not?
At Cross Timbers, I don't think we did.
Actually, it doesn't look like it.
No, ma'am. I think it stayed the same. We dropped in those pendant lights.
Yeah, they dropped the lighting down. Okay.
The ceiling stayed the same. Excuse me, at Dove, ADA doors at the control vestibule are now complete, uh, so that's operational. The HVAC installation is complete. And then you can see very similar list to the, to the previous campuses. We are working on punch list items at the campuses, and our, our team and, and the district's construction team are all working on those as we speak. Couple of shots here for Learning Commons at, excuse me, at Dove.
Wow.
That's a little different.
Yeah.
You walk into that one and the one at GGS is.
Is the main entry now off the side hallway?
That, that's the same, that's the same hallway to the academic corridor, but the doors had to move up into the vestibule to meet ADA. So you would have, have the, uh, right amount of ramp, uh, going down into the academic corridor. So those are brand-new doors just off to the right, and they're further inset into the vestibule area.
Yeah, the ADA drove some of that, little bit of trigger work there, but, yeah.
Let me rephrase my question. Is the main entry into the libraries to where it was, or is it? Okay, okay.
Yes. And now you have a better secondary entry off the academic corridor because of the lower left-hand shot.
Yep, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's not now the main entrance. The main entrance is still the?
Right.
That is correct.
Okay. Still looks amazing.
Yeah, it's completely different look. At Canon, just a couple of things that you, uh, should know, that HVAC subcontractor and our team, MEP consultants, are still tweaking some HVAC control issues, uh, with several of the rooms on the first floor, academic wing. So there's a, there's just a control issues with some of the units talking to the, to the control systems and some aren't. And so we're, we're actively working on all that now. A civil engineering inspection for the final exterior punch, uh, is now complete. A civil engineering inspection for the final exterior punch is now complete. So all that's being worked on, so all the outside work, amphitheater, the playground areas and stuff, all that's being taken care of now. Relays have been installed, separate building lights and parking lots, so that's good, finally, that's done. And then we're still working on exterior architectural punch lists. So the brick walls, the roof, downspouts, different things like that are, are being worked on that were on the punch list. So, we're getting close, getting close at Cannon. And at Mustard and Panther Stadium, the sod was installed Friday at the two upper levels on the hillside there. We had several good meetings out there last week, and so that happened fairly fast. The flooring was replaced at the press box, so we had some, some flooring issues, buckling and some different things. And so they came in and replaced it all, so that's done. Contractor adjusted some of the doors for the single-user toilets, make sure they're closing those. Just some closing and latching, which is important on restrooms. And Lee Lewis is, again, waiting on some samples for the new proposed casework. There's some finished, or at the press box, there's some finished casework that we're still waiting on, on that, so, that's coming. And then at the MAC, the unit heater for the MAC arrives next week for installation. The graphics are, if you've seen those, are removed, the wall's been stripped all the way down, it's prepped for new graphics. We've received submittals, they're in process of being made for fabrication. And Joris shows new graphics installed by the end of September. So, it has moved forward significantly, especially with the wall prep, because they took it all the way down and rebuilt it back up. So Johnsco is the, is the new vendor that's under Joris. It's that they wanted, they wanted control of that finished work, and so they took it all down and built it back. So they couldn't blame anybody, so that's, that's where we stand on that, so. I kind of went through that quickly, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions?
Just one quick comment. I've been through, I've been actually in several of the schools that have the vestibule work going on. And it was, I was very surprised at how little the work is in the way of people coming in and out of the building. It's a minimal, minimally disruptive. So thank you for your efforts.
Paul's point, they've made great strides from, from previous times, and I think they've done well.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Lisa.
Move on to item A, update on Quality Cup.
Yes, so this is our official yearly update on the Quality Cup. And we've got Brian and David here that are here to present the results from last year.
While Mr. Zarn's pulling it up, there's one thing I want to say, is I want to thank Mr. Denny. If you know Robin Wallace is our head volleyball coach at Grapevine High School. You know, coaches are real, boy, when they schedule things, they want to know where their facility is. And we had a little bit of construction going on at Grapevine, so we asked her to move to Cross Timbers. So she got herself all set up and she was ready to go, and we had to make a little phone call, we had a little issue. Robin's, Robin's awesome, and we said, okay, we got another place for you. So, I want to thank her and Ryan Martin, Paul and everybody, Dave, because that was a little stressful on a phone call about, hey, we're gonna have to move it one more time. But she was, she was a trooper, and we appreciate her, so thank you for everything, Mr. Denny, appreciate your help on that, that was a big, big asset.
Where'd she go?
We moved her to GMS. And so we, we got all of our parking lots.
We can't, we can't tell you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Ryan, members of the board. Tonight, it's our pleasure to bring you the annual GCISD Quality Cup Report. This information is based on the recently wrapped-up school year, eighteen-nineteen school year. The Quality Cup here in GCISD is loosely based on UIL's Lone Star Cup. It measures or helps us take stock of our secondary extracurricular activities in two unique ways. It measures participation as a number against our whole student body. And then also, it looks at merit-based or competitive-type activities. And we award points based on a rubric that we'll talk you through here in a bit. While it is based loosely on the UIL Lone Star Cup, I would caution you that it is not actually a competition, and we will not be crowning a Quality Cup winner tonight. I know you're disappointed. So, the folks that work on this, the athletics department, myself, and then the secondary campus administrators, I do want to say a big thank you to our campus principals, because they do a lot of work, and they crunch a lot of numbers in gathering all of the club rosters and activity rosters and those type of things. They do a whole lot of work to help us put this pretty, pretty big report together, so I appreciate their help with that. Every year, we take a look at highlights, and we have several things we want to kind of bring to you. But the first one there, we talk about the number of extracurricular activities, they're high-performing and they're vast, and they really are. Beyond the traditional athletics or traditional fine arts, we have myriad academic opportunities outside of the school day. And we run the gamut from FFA and the fishing club all the way through, kids are building robots and kids are going to Morocco. So, we do have just about something for everybody. Do want to point out that this year, our overall points in the district did increase, and we hit a mark that we're pretty proud of. I'll let Brian share that with you in a bit. And as we promised in last year's report, we did include Special Olympics in our report this year. And that includes five gold medals at the state competition.
And so like we said, what we wanted to do is just give you a small sample of some of the accomplishments we had during the school year. And one of the things we're really proud of is our academic all-state athletes that we had. And at Grapevine High School this year, you can see we had thirty students who were nominated and qualified, and were considered the academic all-state team. And there it gives you a representation of the different sports, so we've got a good variety there throughout our sports. Colleyville Heritage High School, oddly enough, had thirty as well. And we were really excited that we had that many kids academic all-state this year. Something that we really, we talk to our kids a lot about it. We love to be great athletes and those, things of that nature, but the student part and making good grades is something we really want to focus on. So we're real happy with these numbers right here. And so, just running through, if you'll, if you'll go with me, I wanted to, we picked out just a couple of things, again, from each high school that were some accomplishments throughout the year. And of course, for Grapevine athletically, the girls' golf team won their third state title. The fine arts, the theater presented the award-winning Newies, Newsies, sorry. And the academics, we had the Skills USA Auto State Qualifier for Hot Rod. Colleyville Heritage won its first state baseball title this year. The choir performed at the Texas Association of School Administrators. And the academics, the DECA, had eight first-place awards at the state level. Moving on to our middle schools, again, we just picked out a couple of things. We had a lot of great things to talk about, but we just, we tried to highlight a few as we went through. And the seventh-grade A-team volleyball was second place. And I want to, want to make sure I note that on those middle school ones, remember, we're in a district different than our high school district. We're in there with the Carroll, Dawson, and the three Capel schools. So, we're competing against some schools with larger enrollments, bigger numbers, and our kids do a really great job competing against them. The band was runner-up at TMEA State Otter Band Competition, State Geography B Qualifier. CTMS had the seventh-grade A football team in second place. The theater presented Shrek Junior Musical. And our academics group, the state math counts competition, was eleventh overall, and two students in the top twenty-five. Moving on to GMS, the seventh and eighth-grade boys' track team finished third place in the district. The dance won the Marching Auxiliary Super Sweepstakes Award. And the National History Day competition, we had three first-place finishers. And at Heritage Middle School, the seventh-grade A volleyball team went undefeated. The choir was recognized by the Mark of Excellence Foundation. And the academic piece was the Texas State Math and Science Coaches Association State Competition Qualifier. So, this is just a small sample of the great things they did this year, and we're very proud of all those items.
So again, one of the two items that the Quality Cup measures is overall participation in our secondary campuses. So you can see that we are still holding at ninety-seven percent. We're actually up a little bit, our real number is about ninety-seven point three percent. And all of our campuses, with the exception of one, are either where they were last year or actually improving. This is, again, the information that our secondary campus principals help put together. They collect all the rosters and put that against our overall enrollment, and we come up with these percentages. And next, we want to talk about points.
So the next slide here gives you just a representation. This is what we're really excited about. We, we actually eclipsed the ten-thousand-point barrier for the first time since we've begun this. We finished with ten thousand four hundred and fifteen points this year as a district. That's our two high schools and all four of our middle schools. So, it was an outstanding year, and we had a lot of great accomplishments in that area. So, running through again, where do these points come from? And again, we've modeled our athletic standards after the Quality Cup. And just to give you an idea this year, if you haven't seen the results, but this year, the twenty-nineteen school year, the Quality Cup results are out, and both of our schools finished in the top twenty. Grapevine High School finished tied for fourteenth with fifty-four points, and Colleyville Heritage was tied for nineteenth with fifty-two. So, this puts us the last two years that both of our schools have finished in the top twenty, in the Lone Star Cup, excuse me, Lone Star Cup. So that's a great accomplishment.
No other school district has had two schools, two schools in the top twenty.
Correct, correct, yes, it was an outstanding year for our kids. The middle school, the middle school metric is, again, it's the same one we've been using as well. And again, if you'll note, we, we've got a category for when we just play our schools, the GCISD schools, but then there's also the zone championships, which include our Carroll and Capel schools as well. So, that gives you an idea where those points come from.
For our fine arts, we don't actually delineate between high school and middle school, because those activities parallel one another. For instance, I can make the all-region band in middle school, and I can also make the all-region band in high school. So rather than having two metrics that actually use the same thing, we just use the same one. This does apply to not only our music groups, but theater, visual arts, dance, we'll look at that in just a moment. And we apply those levels at the district, region, area, all-state level consistently across the board. As a note, Jay Zeller and I are the only two people who actually do the scoring. That way, we make sure that it's consistent across the board, the campus principals are not doing their own scoring. We're doing that scoring for them, so it's absolutely consistent across the board. So you can see what we do for our music groups, and this is also our visual arts groups. We have another grid for dance and cheer, and again, this parallels both at the middle school and high school level. For instance, you saw that Grapevine Middle School won Super Sweepstakes. That would be the same type of competition that our high school dance groups are attending, that type of thing. And then the grid for academics, again, broken down at the, the local level, district, region, state qualifier, both for individual and team organizations. And this is the grid we use for anything that doesn't fit into that traditional fine arts or athletic category. So now let's take a look at some numbers.
So, when we pull up our first slide here, we've got our point totals for Colleyville Heritage and for Grapevine High School. And again, we're not comparing our two schools, this is simply good information for us to understand where our points are coming from.
But if they were...
If we were...
It looks like Grapevine would.
It was a fantastic year for both high schools. We're, we're actually, both of them are up. Both of them are up by about a thousand points each, so, and again, it's in a lot of different areas. From year to year, these points are gonna kind of shift and flow between schools and between campuses. And some of it's impacted by the district that we're in as well. So, a lot of reasons for why sometimes some of the numbers might be going up and down in certain areas. But we're really proud of these numbers. And then our four middle schools, we've got listed up here, again, we're not comparing our middle schools to each other. All of them did a fantastic job this year, and that just kind of gives you an idea of where the points were distributed between those groups as well. And so, again, highlighting what, what we were really most excited about was the fact that we ended up with over ten thousand points overall as a district, which means we have a lot of great things going on at all levels, and it's something that we're gonna try to improve upon next year. So finishing up with the last kind of slide that just shows you points, here's just an idea of where each high school, middle school, I mean, not each, but the high schools and middle schools both ended up with, high schools were just over fifty-seven hundred points. Our middle schools were at forty, you know, forty-six, almost forty-seven hundred. But again, the highlight for us has been the fact that we eclipsed the ten-thousand-point barrier. That is indicative of all of our coaches and programs and the jobs that they're doing, so we're really proud of that.
And so our goals for next year, number one, we want to work to eliminate barriers to participation. An example of that would be working to make sure that we don't schedule events on top of one another where a student wouldn't be able to compete in two sports at the same time, that type of thing, making sure that we're aligned. We want to work to increase our communication, and both Brian and I have a liaison through the communications department that we're already working with to make sure that we're getting good news out about our, our programs and what our kids do, doing features on, on special kids and our programs, making sure that all of our events are advertised so we can get community members to it. And then finally, athletics and myself are gonna continue to work with our program directors to continue to improve and expand, and make sure that we're trying to reach every single kid in the district. And that is our Quality Cup Report for this year.
A great report. Do we have any, any questions or comments? None? Great report, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And the folks at the campuses really put together all of this information. And so, you know, David and Brian did a great job presenting, but we have people at every campus that are, throughout the year, keeping up with this information, and it's really important.
And I want to thank our coaches too, because on our end of it, we're asking them constantly, hey, give us updated material, what do you have? How many all-districts did you have, how many academics all-states? So, it really is truly a team effort, and these two guys lead it, but it's, it's a lot of guys involved to make all this happen.
Thank you, sir, thank you both very much. Move on to item I, update on state accountability and the district campus ratings.
Yeah, so this is an update, the board has seen most of this information, so most of it's not new. However, Ms. Tovar is here to present the accountability ratings for this past summer.
What button did you...
Come up there, Ms. Tovar. Brad, anything else you'd like to add before...
Well, I just want to remind the board that this is kind of a snapshot one day, you know, for our kids as far as particular tests. What, what we're able to see tonight, and tonight was a great example of just the greatness, and I think the opportunities that we have here in GCISD with our partnerships, just, you know, our Quality Cup, the opportunities, extracurricular opportunities we offer our kiddos, the fact that we had a young man come here and he was, spent the summer in Morocco, you know, learning Arabic. I mean, that, that, there's so many things that, that, great things that are taking place here in GCISD that aren't measured in, in the data that you're gonna see tonight. And Shannon's gonna do an amazing job, there's nobody better than Shannon Tovar. We certainly use this data to, to make, to tweak our practice. But we also have a lot of formative and summative, locally-created assessments that we use. We value voice, as you well know. So I don't want to, I don't want to discount this, but also to, you know, the, this is a testament for our teachers and just all of our, our staff across GCISD, our custodians, our auxiliary staff. A lot goes into this, but this is not what we're about. I'm excited about the community-based work that we're about to truly get into this year. And so, anyway, this is, this is good stuff, okay, but it's, it's not who we are or what defines us, and so, appreciate you guys. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, Dr. Schnaps, Dr. Ryan, trustees. It seems like we've been talking about A through F coming to us for a lot of years together. And so we were finally at that first year where our campuses will also receive the A through F letter grade ratings. Last year, if you remember, it was the first time the district received a letter grade. So as we move forward to this year, the three categories and the rules and the parameters that were used to assign the ratings for the campuses last year have met standard, those are pretty much the same rules as last year. It's just this time around now, the campuses have received a letter grade same as the district. We still have the three domains, so student achievement, school progress, and closing the gaps. And I'll use the district's numbers as an example as we kind of walk through what each one of those means. And then we'll look a little bit at our campuses, and then as well as a few neighboring and comparable school districts. So this is the first little part, we'll get right into it. There, to get to the domain one overall score, there are three components. The first one is the domain one star component. And that particular one, this is one where they take all the tests, all the test scores, they put them all together in one big bucket, and they tally it up, and they say, well, of all those tests, what percent approached grade level or higher? What percent met grade level or higher? What percent matched a grade level or higher? So in this slide, you can see that we had twenty-two thousand six hundred and seventy tests that, for our accountability this year. Of those tests, twenty thousand of them, the students approached or higher. Fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy-two tests were at the meet... Fifteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-two tests were at the meets or higher. And then eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-one were masters or higher. Usually when we see that pattern of about ninety, sixty, thirty, when we kinda talk about how that averages out to sixty or higher, we don't know that's going to be an A district. And you say Shannon, a sixty-four is not what I would think is an A. This is true. So what they did is that we take eighty-eight, sixty-seven, thirty-six, we add 'em, that's one ninety-one, we divide by three, we get sixty-four. But to make the scale score work, because the state of Texas had all the different component scores out there and trying to have them all line up and say, well, this is gonna be an A for this or B for that, they have what we call a scaling tool and it converts that scale score, that component score, to a scale score on that A through F continuum to make the score more relatable. So, a sixty-four run through the scale score converter is a ninety-one for the scale score of A for our district on our star component for the first part of domain one. The second part of domain one talks about CCMR, college career military ready. You can see down there underneath the big gray bar where it has all the lists of the different ways that students can earn college career and military ready points. Everything up to about where it says CTE coherent sequence coursework. All of those things earn a student a full point and they are transitioning through some things with CTE right now, so there are some CTE elements that only receive a half a point. But they're gonna look at each student and go through all the things that earn one point first. And if the student qual doesn't qualify for any of those but does qualify for that CTE point, they'll put it there on the end so that's most advantageous for the district. Of the one thousand and sixty-three graduates for the class of 2018, the students earned eight hundred and thirty point five points through all those different measures. That's seventy-eight percent. Again, we run through that scale score converter and that seventy-eight becomes a ninety-five or an A for the part two of domain or college career military ready component for the district overall. The third part of domain one is graduation rate component. In this one, they take the four, five, and six-year extended rates of graduation rates and they determine which one is the one that is your best of those three. If you don't have three years' worth of graduation data, then they use your annual dropout rate and that gets converted to a more of a completion rate type of score. So they report all of those. The one they used here for us was the highest, which is class of 2017's five-year extended rate, and that's a ninety-eight point two. We run that through the scale score converter and that's a ninety-five, also an A. And so for all three parts of domain one, you can see that the district received an A. So you say, from there, Shannon, what's gonna happen to all of those components? And so what happens now is to get a district or a high school or a K-12 score, the star component is forty percent, college career military ready is forty percent, and graduation rate is twenty percent. If you're in an elementary school or a middle school, you don't have CCMR or graduation rates. And so your domain one is one hundred percent, just that student star component, that student achievement on the star at the approaches, meets, and masters grade levels. And so you can see how they weight the points. And so then they add that up. And so it's already been scaled because we, based on the scaled score. And so you can see that forty percent of ninety-one and forty percent of ninety-five and twenty percent of ninety-five adds up to a ninety-three, which on in common, thinking about an A through F kind of grading system, a ninety or higher would be an A. So the district got an A for overall domain one. So the next one that we start talking about is domain two, which has to do with how they try to measure growth. And within domain two, what they're gonna do is they're gonna let you pick the better of the two methods. Because this first method we're gonna take a peek at right here, this one is very difficult for the high schools because they don't have as many opportunities for students to show growth between continuous back-to-back star subjects. So like they don't have a third grade math, a fourth grade math, a fifth grade math like that, it's, they have less opportunities. So they have something else they call relative progress, which we'll talk about here in just a minute. So this right here is actually a report that I run in DMAC and then some of my principal visits so far this fall, kind of talking about the notion of how TEA calculates growth for state accountability. We do take a look at this particular report. And what it does is it helps them see which tests, in reading and math only, right? Which tests where the kids had back consecutive years, where the kids were able to meet the growth expectation or were they able to move from performance level to performance level? And so there's kind of two ways to do this. You're gonna say, well, if I moved from one performance level to another, I moved up, then I'm probably gonna be in that, getting a one-point category. Or if I stayed masters previous year, masters this year, again, that's two thousand, seven hundred and, what is it, eighty-five up there who stayed tests where the student mastered in the previous year and mastered again this year. It also helps principals see where you have, may have students who are, they were, did not meet last time, did not meet this time, but then did still meet their growth. So right there, you can see under the one-point category, there's three hundred and twenty-five tests. And within the DMAC application, I can click on it and the principals can see, even when they do it themselves, they can see who those students were because the reality is, even if I didn't meet two years ago and I didn't meet this year, but I met or exceeded growth, to meet or exceed growth, that means I had to have enough vertical scale score growth from meets previous year to meets this year. I may not have made it by the time the state of Texas gave the test, but I'm gonna get there and I'm going the right way. So that right there actually is a celebration and it's good to see a structure that does reward that kind of growth in a student, even though they weren't ready on test day to show that they could approach meet or master grade level. So you can see there's, what they do is they'll give you the zero-point configuration up there for those items at the top, a half a point for the ones in the middle. So like if you went approaches, approaches, but you didn't hit that vertical scale score growth, you get a half a point for those tests. They total up all those points, they divide by the points possible to come up with a number, and then they run it through that scale score converter. So for our district, we had a raw score of seventy-two. We took all those points, added 'em up and divided by the number of points available, put it through the scale score converter, and that gives us an eighty-four, which is a B for academic growth as measured by the star and how TEA does it. But you get the better of the two components. And so the other one is relative performance. This is the one where we talked about how they build the bell curve on historical data. And so on your X-axis, it goes all the way out to one hundred percent economically disadvantaged and your Y goes all the way up to one hundred on the points. And what we're looking at for elementarys and middles is gonna be your star component. So basically the average of approaches are higher, meets are higher, or masters are higher. And then if you have CCMR, so like a district, a K-12 or a high school or a university prep where there's six twelve, for those guys, they add in that CCMR part as well. And then they start comparing you to other campuses or districts with similarly percentage, similar percentages of economically disadvantaged kiddos. And so you can see like in this example up here on the screen, that little dot there in that blue band, that example district is above, it looks like it's probably about seventy-five percent economically disadvantaged, that example dot is above the average line, that's C based on historical data. And then they decided how many standard deviations to go above and below, for you to be considered an A, B, C, D, or F. For our district, when you take our raw score of seventy-one and they run it through the scale score converter, it's a eighty-nine, which is also a B. But for the purposes of making our total score at the end, they do let you have the higher of the two. So our overall score, school progress score for the district is a B based on our above-average performance when you compare us to districts that are similarly economically disadvantaged. The third part is domain three, and that's where we talk about closing the gaps. And this is the one where they go across fourteen different demographic groups. Over there on the far end, it says all African-American, Hispanic, white, and then American Indian, Asian, Pacific Islander, two or more, economically disadvantaged, ELLs, special ed current, special ed former, continuously enrolled, and then non-continuously enrolled. And then they look at all the different groups to make sure they meet minimum size. So in the all category, it's ten tests. By demographic groups, it's twenty-five tests to see if you hit those targets. Now you say, Shannon, are the targets the same for every content area and every demographic group? The answer is no. The targets were set a couple of years ago based on historical data. The targets for this year is the same as last year. And then those targets should stay the same for the next three years. They'll rise up, stay steady for five, rise up again, and stay steady for another five. So wherever you see a yes, that means yes, our students either met or exceeded the target that was given for that demographic group. But is it possible that, for example, the different demographic groups, one demographic group may be a higher target than the other? Yes, that is true. So you can't really tell that from this particular chart. When you go, do go to TEA's website and it shows you all the accountability data, you can see what the actual target was as well as where the campus or the district actually scored for each of those different demographic groups. This one is actually kind of interesting because it helps us, I think, in some ways get that first look across in terms of identifying potential barriers because it kinda gives us a heat map kind of idea of where we may potentially have some things that looked at, need to be looked at more closely. So you can see there, the other thing that stands out that's maybe a little disconcerting at first look, it says federal graduation rate and it says there's some no's across there. If you have already exceeded the ninety percent target, they expect you to increase by one tenth of a percentage point every year. So if you're already at ninety-eight point seven, that means the next time around, they want you at ninety-eight point eight. So that's a very, I think, a very narrow margin. So I don't want you to look at that and go, oh my gosh, are the kids not graduating? No, they're doing very well, they're just in that really, really top group. And it makes it really difficult to meet that one tenth of a percentage of point through the different years. Okay, let's see. Talked past my pages. So if you're in elementary or a middle school, you don't have CCMR as we talked about earlier. And so when we look at your closing the gaps indicators, they're gonna look at academic achievement. Academic achievement is reading and math at the meets grade level or higher standard. So what percentage of all those indicators in reading and math, where your different fourteen groups, where they meets are higher at the target? Academic growth is what we just looked at, that's that domain two where we add up all the points. English language proficiency, that's how the students did on the Tell Pass. If you don't have a Tell Pass score, rating at your campus because you didn't have enough tests, then they redo those percentages to kind of absorb that ten percent. It's not a zero, but you also don't get full credit, they absorb it into the other areas. And so those are students who scored advanced high or they've moved up at least one proficiency level from the year before. Student achievement domain score essentially, that's your domain one score. And then down there with high schools, you can see how they add in federal graduations status instead of growth. If you don't have a graduation status yet, then they use growth instead. But over here in the grade, this is how our district fared in terms of domain three. And so this is our closing the gap score. Academic achievement, we met twenty-four of the targets across those demographic groups that we would need to meet. That's ninety-six percent of them. You can also see that there on federal graduation rate, like we talked about a minute ago, it says two. However, we are very, very high, it's just very difficult to score those extra percentage points at that level, but we're at eighteen percent. So you can see we got just the two point five points. ELL proficiency, we met the one indicator, we got a hundred there. And then school quality CCMR, that's your domain one, plus college and career military ready, we met eleven of those targets across the demographic groups. And so that was a hundred percent of them and that scored thirty. And you add up all those points and that comes to ninety-one. However, we did have one campus that scored a D in that domain and that's why we can't have the full ninety-one or an A for this particular, closing the gaps domain three as a district. The highest we're allowed to have is eighty-nine or a B. So in ten easy steps after that, we'll be able to figure out what our overall district rating is. So what we'll do first is we take a look at student achievement, school progress, part A and part B. And what we noticed first is that part B was higher than part A, so we know we're gonna use that eighty-nine. But then we compare it to student achievement because what they, TEA, when they built this thing, they said, okay, listen, like we talked about a minute ago, where we had a student who went, did not meet, did not meet, but I exceeded growth expectation, am I a success this year? I certainly am, right? Or what about a student who went masters this year, masters last year, is he a success this year? Absolutely. So it tries to take the balance and say, all right, if you're a campus or a district that showed a lot of growth, that we wanna acknowledge that and not label you a failing campus necessarily if your student achievement isn't as high as other places. So for us, you can see that our eighty-nine on school progress part B, relative performance, is higher than school progress part A, that's that growth number. So we have the eighty-nine, so that's our overall school progress score. But they take seventy percent, it's going to be the better of domain one or domain two. And so you can see student achievement, that's CCMR, graduation rates, and then how we did on the star, it approaches, meets, and masters, and that scores a ninety-three. And so they're gonna use the ninety-three because that's higher than what we got on school progress, domain two. And so the ninety-three is seventy percent of your overall score, so that's sixty-five point one points because seventy percent, seventy percent of ninety-three is sixty-five point one. Closing the gaps is still thirty percent. The score we got was at eighty-nine, you carried across, thirty percent times eighty-nine, it's twenty-six point seven. Add those two things together, that adds up and rounds off to a ninety-two. And so our district had an overall rating of an A. The same process would be done for each of the campuses. There are some nuances based on grade span configuration and whether or not you have, like Collegiate Academy didn't have three years' worth of graduation data yet. So there are some little differences here and there based on the way TEA accommodates for those unique situations. This next slide shows you elementary campuses and how they did on each of their domains as well as their overall score. I decided this year to go ahead and show you the percent economically disadvantaged from the fall snapshot of this academic year, so you can kinda get a glimpse of the differences between the campuses. I also did this because there's lots of talk about whether or not this new system of A through F unfairly targets, stigmatizes, or labels schools and districts that are higher percentage of economically disadvantaged. Is it more difficult for those schools to score well on this particular structure? So you can kinda get a sense of, did it, could that be an area where we need to look a little more deeply in terms of, did it impact our performance? And so you can kinda look across the elementaries and see how they did. Obviously ninety-two, a hundred is A, eighty, eighty-nine, B, and so forth. So here are our middle school campuses and I university prep. Again, I put the percent economically disadvantaged, just like with the elementaries, so you can kinda get a sense of the differences between the campuses. And again, this notion of whether or not this particular system unfairly targets our students, our campuses that are higher percentages of economically disadvantaged. And so there's the overall. And again, it's the same process, the better of domain one or two is seventy percent and domain three is that remaining thirty percent. Here are the high schools and the district overall. On Bridges, you see that it says domain one, eighty-six. They don't have a domain two or three score because they're an alternative educational setting. However, Bridges did earn four extra bonus points based on, primarily on choosing a more rigorous graduation plan. And so that's why there says ninety as an A instead of the eighty-six. They continue with distinction designations as in previous years. And so many of these have to do with how, how many indicators that you got for your campus as compared to those who are also in your comparability group. We've talked about comparability groups together for the past several years. And that's where they pick a group of forty. Each campus has its own unique forty. GHS might be in Colleyville Heritage's group, but Colleyville Heritage may not be in Grapevine's group. That's how, that's fine, that's normal. But they look at things like grade span, number of students, percent economically disadvantaged, mobility rate, percent special ed, percent economic, early college high school, percent ELL. And so then, if you're a high school, you have to have at least thirty-three percent of your indicators in that top quartile of your group. And then if you are an elementary or a middle school, you have to have at least half of your indicators in that top quartile for your group, except for the two that are the top twenty-five percent of your group, which is academic growth and closing the gaps. So basically they take your domain two score for academic growth or your domain three score for closing the gaps and they just rank everyone, the top twenty-five percent gets the, gets the distinction. Last year, we got about thirty-seven distinctions, this year forty-four. So we had more, more campuses being recognized for more things than in the previous year. And then each year, I do like to give you a few sample districts just so you can kinda see what's going on out there around us. Some of these are our neighbor districts. Some of these are districts that are similar to us in size, number of high schools, percent economically disadvantaged, and that sort of thing. You can see there, for example, there we are, Grapevine-Colleyville, twenty-four point seven percent economically disadvantaged, about thirteen thousand students, our overall rating of A. And then our neighbor nearby, with a different economically disadvantaged percentage of one point three, and then about eight thousand... of 1.3, and then about 8,000 students, and also their rating of A. You can kind of go through, in terms of looking for a district that's one of some of the comparables, typically I'll look Rockwall, Tomball, Wiley, because they have comparable economically disadvantaged numbers, they have two high schools. They're starting to get a little bit bigger than we are, but overall, they're not too far off. So if I'm just looking for a general comparable to kind of baseline myself off of, I tend to look at those guys or someone about that size, and about that percent economically And then this represents all the performance of all the kids at our campuses, and we thank you for your support through the year so that we could bring you all this information and so the students could be successful.
Any questions?
I do have one. The, let's see, under the growth point slide?
Mm-hmm.
Way back. That first section, we've got 2,300, I guess those are tests, those are individual tests.
This one right here on awarding growth points?
Yes.
Yes, those are individual tests.
So in those subjects for those students, it looks like they did not get a full year of growth based on that one test?
That's right. So like at the very top there, where it says does not meet, does not meet, does not meet, there were 380 tests across the district. Yes, they were either reading or math, where the student, as measured by the star, between those, you know, last year on Star Day and this year on Star Day, yes.
What are we doing with that data? Because we can drill down to individual student in campus. What are we doing with that data to make sure that we are getting that full year of growth for every student?
So, you know, we've heard through, we've heard through a variety of things this summer. We talk about, of course, we're going to have our new new universal screener. Last year, we had the RTI reboot. Those are things that help support that. And in my visits with principals, when I've been going out showing them this particular slide, as soon as we bring it up, we're able to, we drill down, we look at the names, the principals know who these young folks are, and they start talking about their plans for the year. So I think in the next month or so, when you get to see everyone's campus improvement plans, you're going to see more language hopefully supporting those kinds of things and strategies, because I think it really speaks to the need for our goal number one, which is to identify and eliminate those barriers to success, yes.
Right. And we absolutely want to ensure that, you know, that's that every student gets at least a full year of growth for every year.
Yeah, absolutely.
But a full year of growth measured by star, that's not the same as a full year of growth measured by any other type of measure, right? So do we use star as the baseline for that, or we use use something else, right?
I think that star is one measure that's out there. It's great that there's lots of different variety of data points, I think, for parents. Star does give you a wealth of information because you're looking specifically at how did my student do this year in relation to the text, the teacs that were supposed to be taught this particular curriculum year, right? For the course that they were enrolled in. And so it does give parents and school districts information about, for us as a district, about the curriculum and instructional practices, and whether or not they helped. If we look all the way across, kind of at the every student level, whether or not we had a plan that works for all students or most students. And again, that speaks to that need for goal one and that importance of that particular work. But I would say, too, as a parent, or as a teacher, or as a principal, I would be looking for other measures as well. So this year, we're rolling out our new universal screener with Ames Web, and what we're hearing is from from Amy Montemeyer in that group, is that's going to give us much more granular data that we're going to be able to really see over time, specific skills that they're wanting to watch. And then as well, we do have our local teach checks. So if you're wondering, well, how much science did she know at the beginning of the year as compared to how much science did you need to know at the end of the year? Let's say biology, beginning of the year compared to the end of the year. We do have our local teach checks that we see in I develops. We run those through DMAC, so that can be disaggregated by student group as well. So there's a variety of tools. Then plus two, we do have the PSAT, which we give to all the aspiring seventh grade, and then all of eight, nine, 10, and 11, so that parents can have year-to-year a look at that college readiness piece.
The new screener, is that going to be three times a year or two times a year?
So that's the one that Amy Montemeyer was kind of showing, it's the spring. So that's the one where you're, I mean, I guess it was spring. But that's right, beginning, middle, and end of year. And then as data indicates, some more frequent progress monitoring, they would have more frequent looks at the different assessments within that module, yes.
Could you go to page 82?
So mine aren't numbered in the same way. Can you tell me what's on page 82?
It's the academic growth, yeah, that one.
This one? Okay.
Could you explain, when you have a scale score of 89 on that relative performance, so just assuming that we have 20 percent economically disadvantaged kids in the district, an 89, what does that tell us? Does that tell us that 11 percent of the districts that have similar demographics did better than us in the star when you look at approaching meets and masters? Is that what that means?
So they said that when they built this particular graph, that they were going to make it stable so that over time, theoretically, we would all have the opportunity to be able to earn an A. So if everybody who was 24.7 percent economically disadvantaged were all above that line up there in the A category, theoretically, we would all grant an A. So I don't know that we want to start thinking about it in terms of, well, we got an 89, that means 11 percent of the people were better than us.
Okay.
What that tells us, though, is that we're very right there on the edge in terms of our overall performance when you look at college career military ready, and as well as approaches, meets, and masters on the star, that we are performing nearly in that top group of districts that are similarly economically disadvantaged.
But those test results are not just for the economically disadvantaged kids. We're talking about all kids.
It's everybody, right.
That have for districts that have similar demographics.
Yes. So it's all the kids, yes.
Any other questions? As always, thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Is there anybody better than Shannon Tovar?
Well, thank you.
It's 9:45 at night, and she's still doing some good work.
All right. I'll see y'all tomorrow at noon then. Or maybe not. Okay, yeah, I'll see y'all at 8 o'clock like normal. Yeah, that's good.
And I am reminded about-
I'm just going to go ahead and take a nap out of my car. I might be wearing the same thing tomorrow, but I'll be honored to be here, sir.
Reminded about some of the folks from TEA and other places that said that the A-through-F is going to be simple.
Yeah.
It's anything but simple. And so I feel confident that our folks are using the data in the way that it's intended, but certainly the we have a lot to lot to improve as far as the system goes. But thank you, Shannon, for your work. And, you know, she talked for several minutes here, but the work that she does every single day allows her to be able to stand up and talk with such expertise about this particular system. And so, Shannon, we thank you for your presentation tonight and for your work every day.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Move on to item K, review the 2019-2020 board planning calendar.
Yeah, we just got a couple of changes moving from August to September. You can see those reflected on page 94 of your packet. There are no other changes besides those three.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Any questions? Move on to item L, request for reports to the board. Do we have any? No? Move on to the consent agenda for approval. Anything cool? If not, a motion, please? May that we accept the consent agenda? Thank you very much. You don't have a second? Lee, thank you very much. All of the favor? Motion carries seven, zero. We are going back into workshop and executive session at this point, but let's go ahead and do announcements. Do we have any?
I do if nobody else does.
Go ahead. I do, I have a couple, but go ahead.
So first of all, the cannon ribbon cutting is Thursday morning at 9 o'clock, followed by tours from 9:30 to 11:00. And then, of course, the first two games at Mustang Panther Stadium are really big games, Colley Heritage versus South Lake Carroll. And then the next week, Colley Heritage versus Trinity, where we've got our Medal of Honor recipients there. So a lot of big things that are happening in and around the new stadium.
Is the cannon opening, is that open to the public?
Yes, sir.
Including including the tours?
Yes, sir. But the people that take the tours have to go through the Raptor program to be able to get inside the building.
Okay.
And that they did a good job. Communication did a good job getting the word out to RSVP, and let them know that you still have to go through that.
Do we, because I keep seeing that, do we need to fill that out, the RSVP?
Yeah, well.
I mean, yeah.
Just let Kim know if you're going to be there.
Yeah.
Did we specifically target the neighbors and the communication to make sure they had-
Neighbors have been invited, yes, sir.
They did a good job. And talking about communication, I like to say, with convocation was just outstanding. They did a great job. So really wanted to thank Kristin, you and your team, and Rowdy, and Addison, and Devon, and Matt. Y'all just did a great job. So thank you. That's always so much fun and full of energy. Becky had an interview September 6th in Austin.
You missed the game.
So I wanted to wish you luck on your TASB director interview on that day. So good luck on that. Any anything else? Any other announcements?
Congratulations on the first week of school. It was a very eventful occasion that was as uneventful as possible.
So at this point, we will go back to our workshop and then into executive session.
So are we going to do the question?